Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broom. We have a quorum present with council members McKenzie, Arnold, and Gay. So I will call the meeting to order at 7:32 PM with maintaining and reinstating and reincorporating my objections to the January 2nd omnibus this council passed and Resolution 2024-01.
We will start with the opening ceremony with the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have an invocation by one of our chaplains, by Chaplain Alexander. I messed up, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, councilmen, councilwomen, everybody else. Let us take a moment for prayer to focus our minds on a sense of presence, a sense of love, and a sense of order, and a sense of what we call the mystery of your love and your care for us. Oftentimes we estranged. From our thinking and reflection about you, why we pray, city council members, how do we keep our focus on our human social values in College Park? As well as keep our minds focused on your love, which is ineffable, your order, which is hard to understand, as well as your forgiveness and your leadership and encouragement for us to be more whole, more aware, and more attentive as persons. And this city council meeting assists us in our quest to know what's what, to ask who's who, and to ask why why, so we can be informed and become better students and residents of College Park. We thank you, oh God, for our mayor and the city council persons, the fire police department, the police department, and all those people who work hard on our behalf to help provide a city that we live in to be proud, fair, and caring. Aid us now, oh Lord, with your Holy Spirit to reflect on each issue presented in light of what this might mean if we look at it from the divine spirit above all spirits that lives and dances in the hearts of us all. May we stand in appreciation for the right and the ability to do what we're doing right now, joining our hearts and our minds to deliberate on the needs of our community and the welfare and a sense of order, nonjudgmental order, for all people who are citizens of College Park. May this meeting continue with the knowledge that it is your love that quickens our love, and our love quickens our minds in order to do the best we can. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Next on the agenda is additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda.
Yes, I would like to delete 7W from the agenda today.
7W, that is consideration of an action on a request to allow elected officials access to their ward constituents' contact information that includes name, address, phone number, and email. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
7W.
Is that, is that the correct?
7W.
Yeah. Okay. Any others? Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor of removing item 7W.
Aye.
Aye.
Question. There was no second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate that. Councilmember McKenzie made the motion. Is there a second to remove 7W from, from the agenda?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. All those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, that is unanimous.
Numbering an agenda approval, the agenda.
All those, or is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, that is unanimous.
Next is the presentation of minutes for council, starting with the regular session held on January 16th, 2024.
Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve the, the agenda, I'm sorry, is approved the regular session minutes from January 16th?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion not to approve the minutes of January 16th nor January, the special call meeting of January 22nd due to a lack of consequential events and discussions that occurred in the meeting that are not recorded in the minutes.
So your motion.
Is to disapprove, to not adopt these minutes at this time due to a lack of consequential events and discussions that occurred during those meetings.
Councilmember McKenzie, would you?
Would you like for me to?
Well, we're, we're on 4A, and so.
Okay, well, we, I would like to motion to not approve or to not adopt the minutes of January 16th due to a lack of consequential events and discussions that occurred during that meeting.
Second, okay. Hold on, hold on, wait, hold on. Events and discussions from the meeting.
Consequential.
Events and discussions.
Events and discussions.
Is there a second?
Second with discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carn. Hold on, let me, as, as the person who made the motion, Councilmember McKenzie has the first right to be acknowledged. Are there any?
Yes, I do. I have some things that I would like to say about the minutes, but this applies for.
4A.
Yeah, this applies for 4A and anything else that I'm going to say again later in the meeting about the minutes. After looking over the minutes, our minutes are, the minutes for the January 16th meeting are vague, they're generalized, and they're missing specific vital information. They appear to be a recopying of the agenda items with a mention of who motioned and who seconded, but in the case where there were unanimous votes, that is not recorded, nor are the votes or how the different council members voted recorded in the minutes. In addition, citizen remarks are detailed, but the council and mayor in the meeting reports are summarized, and a lot of the information that is shared during the discussions in the meeting is, is not there. The discussions need to be recorded, the votes need to be recorded. The minutes are the only way that we can go back and see what we decided to do. A year from now, we will read these minutes and we will have no idea what transpired in the meeting. And in this case, for the January 16th meeting, there is quite a bit missing. I am making a request that we go back, and this is another one of the reasons why we probably need a grandicus, because our clerk's office is overwhelmed, there's a lot of things being done. We don't have a stenographer at this point, so I'm not throwing shade at anyone, but our minutes, and those of you that would like to look at our minutes, they look like the minutes of an action agenda, an action item meeting, meeting minutes, but they are not, they are in no way minutes that reflect the meeting that we had.
Does anyone else wish to be heard on this matter?
I made the second with discussion.
Councilmember Carn, the floor is yours.
I agree with Councilmember McKenzie. Essentially, you know, a lot of our discussions aren't included. These, these aren't great minutes at all. These are probably some of the worst minutes I've seen since I've been up here. I was going to modify her motion to include the January 16th workshop and January 22nd special call meeting. All as one consent item, a motion to deny she stated if she'd accept that friendly modification.
Councilmember McKenzie, what is your, what is your desire?
Yes, my desire is, because the same issue is for the January 22nd, and I do invite all to look at those minute, minute meetings, the meetings, minutes from that, those meetings. They are not conclusive, and so that was my motion initially to the special call meeting for January 22nd and the meeting minutes for the January 16th, that we would have those, those minutes actually drawn up again.
Is that 4A, B, and C, or just 4A and C?
Let me look at that again.
My modifications, recommended for A, B, and C.
Yeah, the workshop is not as bad, but the, yeah, I would say A, B, and C to make sure that we are including the information. Like I said, it's not an action minutes, it's not even a discussion. We need more of a verbatim minutes, which say the words that were spoken. And again, if we need to get a stenographer or some help in the clerk's office, I'm definitely advocate for that because we have got to document what we're doing here.
Madam Clerk, are you clear on that motion?
Yes, ma'am. Is, are you amending that motion to include his?
Yes, I'm, I'm, so, so let me get my motion again. So my motion is to not adopt the January 16th workshop and regular session meeting minutes, as well as the January 22nd special call. And we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Due to a lack of consequential, the rest is not even important, but that's the reason. I'll say consequential events and discussions that occurred during that meeting.
And Councilmember Carn, you're second still. Hold.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
I have another motion, Madam Mayor.
In, in regard to minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the January 5th, 2024 special call meeting minutes.
Second.
Have those already been, well.
Amend, a motion to amend the minutes.
And there's a motion to amend the January 5th, 2024 minutes, and a second by Councilman Carn. Discussion?
Yes, the minutes from.
McKenzie, go ahead.
Yes, the minutes from the January 5th meeting are missing the vote. There was a consent agenda that was brought forward at that meeting. However, there is no record of a vote, and we need to know that, that those items were voted. So I would like to have, I'm requesting that we include the vote. If that vote was a unanimous vote, we need to know, like to know who made the motion, and like to know who seconded it, and whether it was unanimous, or how each member of this governing body voted.
Madam Clerk, are you clear?
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. All right, so we are on to.
Sorry. We're on to proclamation, resolutions, plaque, and announcements. Five A, Employee of the Month, which includes employee All-Star of the Month for the December 2023, Sergeant Sharon Crouch Fire Rescue, and Employee of the Month. Employee All-Star of the Month for January 2024, Keisha Clark Building and Property Sustainability. Please come down and take your photo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to present the first Employee Star of the Month for December, which is Sergeant Sharon Crouch. You're welcome. The dedicated employee has served College Park Fire Rescue for 14 years. She has generously contributed, contributed her personal time and energy to benefit the fire department and its constituents. As a fire and basic life support service instructor, she holds certifications as a child safety seat technician, life safety educator level, daycare, and incident safety officer. Notably, she is an active member of the department's honor guard, frequently delivering the department's message to students at various schools and educational institutions within the city. Additionally, she conducts a monthly senior citizens aerobics class at the Princeton Senior Living Facility. Beyond this, she teaches various fitness classes, including Zumba, yoga, Pilates, weightlifting, toning, and cycling. We proudly recognize Fire Sergeant Sharon Crouch, A-Shift, College Park Fire Rescue, as Employee All-Star of the Month for December 2023. Our next employee, the employee joined the City of College Park in January 2023 and has been a tremendous asset ever since. Infusing the workplace with boundless energy, she stands out as the most spirited and kind-hearted individual you encounter. She has demonstrated a strong willingness to learn and take, take on additional responsibilities from day one. Her contributions to building and property sustainability have significantly, significantly improved departmental operations, fostering a smooth workflow in collaboration with other departments. Over the past year, the employee's positive impact has been profound, creating a vibrant and efficient work environment. Her cheerful and friendly demeanor extends beyond the workplace, as evidenced by customer praise during inspections. Many have commended her for addressing their concerns with a warm smile. The Employee All-Star of the Month is Keisha Clark Administrative Assistant, um, what did I got? Inspections Department.
Let's tilt it a little. That's got it. That's good.
Next up, we have remarks to citizens. Citizens were able to sign in by 7:30 at the back. If not. If not, once that has concluded, I will read the email comments, and after, and if there's time left, visitors can come to the floor to speak. The first two are from the workshop, therefore I have Ms. Sherri Godfrey of Law Avenue to discuss contact info.
Good evening, Council. Sorry, I was caught off guard. That item was removed, so I don't need to talk about that. But I would like to address the item to amend or draft legislation to amend the charter, changing the requirement for special meetings. I believe it removes authority from the mayor to call special meetings and then decreases the number required for unanimous vote from four to three. I don't think this is a good idea. One, a special called meetings should be special. They should be less frequent, not something that's done haphazardly or easily more convenient. Special meetings infer that there is urgency for discussion, and it also removes a critical component of feedback from the public, and council is taking actions, and the, the public doesn't have a voice in that regard when there's special meetings. So they should be far and few between, and I find it very unnecessary to amend our charter in that way, or, or pursue efforts to amend our charter in that way when we've been conducting government just fine for half a century, and we need to continue going forward and, and respect the integrity of our charter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next I have Tangi Warrior of Windthorpe Drive to discuss Black History Program.
Tangi Warrior, CEO of Warrior Real Estate, Ward 4, Councilwoman Roger Gay, 4673 Windthorpe Drive, Black History Program Chairperson. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you all again for your support of the Black History Program that we had this weekend at the Gateway Arena. The event was a stellar event and showcased our diversity. We set our goal for 300, and we successfully met our goal. The turnout was amazing and diverse. We had seniors, children, young adults, black, white, male, and female, which speaks volume about the program's success. Created a safe place and welcoming environment for everyone. The variety of food options ranging from diverse vegetarian meals to assorted meats and healthy vegetables added a delightful touch to the event. Not to mention, we kicked off the first Saturday of Black History Month. In attendance, we had Congresswoman Nakima Williams, State Representative, House District 6, Kim Schofield, Fortin County Judge Cassandra Kirk, Fortin County School Board President Kimberly Dove, Fortin County Commissioner, District 5, Mayor Marvin Arrington Jr., Mayor of Forest Park, Angela Butler. We received rave reviews from the community and reviews in areas where we can improve as well. All in all, parking was easy, the coat checks was thoughtful, it was a great program. The program flowed, volunteers were helpful and friendly. Those are some of the feedback I received. I would like to recognize again Ms. Jessie Phillips for her hard work. She's here today, and I don't know if you guys know, but Ms. Phillips this year would be 90 years old. And she has been working hard and dedicated to this program. It's been her mission to grow this program with hopes of having it at the GICC, but at every turn, she met some obstacles. But at every turn, she met some obstacles, but she never stopped. So I was so happy to see us have this at the arena. It made her very proud, made me happy. I also have to give a big kudos to Mercedes. Without her there, it was just... I am so appreciative of her support. We are growing and learning from this experience and we wanted to grow and get better next year. Thank you.
Next, I have Tina Hill of Parkview Drive to discuss gratitude Facebook.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor.
First, I want to really... Just gratitude. Thank you. First to my Councilwoman, Jamel McKenzie. To Officer Clark and to Mr. Robinson. Last meeting, I expressed concern about unhealthy trees that are really a danger to our community. And I got a swift response, consistent communication. They are actually bringing an arborist in and it's being addressed. So I really appreciate my voice being heard and response. Secondly, to James Walker. He hosted a community forum where citizens from throughout the community were invited, community leaders were invited to listen to the questions and the concerns voiced by citizens. It was a very productive session. It ended up with questions being put together to give to the mayor and council. Again, to Councilwoman McKenzie, Word One. Thank you for initiating the Ward One Community Champions kickoff. It was wonderful, watching people come in with ideas, dreams of the future, getting in small groups and discussing where we go from here. It was just the positive direction that was refreshing and so needed. Thank you to the city of College Park and the Black History Program Committee for the inspiring, trailblazing and modern times program celebrating lives and accomplishments of our African-American residents, past and present. It was a very special and very meaningful and inspiring program. Social media to our community. I really encourage College Park citizens to refrain or hesitate posting skewed, negative hateful comments hearsay concerning our city government, workers and elected officials. I respect free speech. I use it myself. I always ask myself, and I hope you will too, ask yourself some questions. Is it true? Is it kind? Is it necessary? Is it helpful? That's a paraphrase from Bernard Melsner. I can't take credit for that, but I use it. In our quest to move forward with developing College Park as a whole, Six West, one of those things, we want to turn College Park into this global gateway city with opportunity for growth, equity and a genuine care and concern for all of its people. We need to attract businesses and developers who feel good about our city. The Facebook pages, Instagram comments that are negative, that have the College Park title or historic College Park title are searched by companies and developers. Just as an employer, you might be down to two candidates. You may go out to Facebook and see what kind of person are you going to hire? Do they fit your company? That's same with developers. Do they... Do we fit that mission statement for that company? Do they want to spend money and invest?
That's three minutes, I'm sorry.
So I encourage...
I'd like to make a motion to allow Ms. Hill to continue until she finishes her comments.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think businesses are...
Hold on, hold on one moment.
Yes.
Are you in favor of the motion or...
No, I'm not in favor.
Okay. So you voted... You were opposed?
I abstained.
Okay. So Councilmembers McKenzie, Karn and Arnold are in favor. Councilmember Gay abstains, the motion passes.
Oh, I have a question there.
Ms. Hill has not finished with her comment.
I know. I didn't know that we voted while people was...
She heard three minutes were elapsed. So if the body wishes to extend the time.
Carry on.
Developers, investors and potential businesses search potential areas and they research, hoping to find a city that fits the company's mission and vision, ensures a successful business with profits and growth. I encourage the committee to forge together in unity, find something in common, be thoughtful. We have to work together to make this work. Lastly, a few of my neighbors in the Housing Authority have expressed concern about their housing future. Little to no updated information has been shared consistently with that community. And I just respectfully request on their behalf and on mine, because they're my neighbors, can we not disseminate on a regular basis information and updates for them? Thank you so much for the extra time as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Johnny Williams of Lourdes Road to discuss code enforcement slash comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I am here about code enforcement. I called them this morning. Instead of them coming out, they sent the police to my house. And they need to know their jobs, you know? You don't do things like that. And also, I have a problem with my neighbor. I have this string beside my house. And I've called them before. How he put the leaves over that bag sit up? And I haven't heard from anyone since I called. And another thing I need to change. When people come down here for their comments, you shouldn't be able to answer them instead of looking at them. You know, we want to answer them who come up here and speak to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, I have Dom Kelly, Hemp Hill Street to discuss invocation slash contact information.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
My name is Dom Kelly, 3546 Hemp Hill Street. My second thing was taken off the agenda, so thank you. My first point, I first want to thank you that every week we do have a very beautiful invocation. But I really quickly want to tell you about my family and maybe other families in our community. My dad's Irish Catholic. My last name is Kelly. My mother is Jewish. I am a practicing Jew. My wife comes from a black Christian and Muslim family and converted to Judaism. And we have a beautiful nine-month-old daughter named Mahalia, who is... We're raising Jewish. I would love for you all to consider that the invocation might be more received and more inclusive if it used more religiously neutral language that was appropriate for the, I would imagine, to be the diverse religious beliefs, the diverse backgrounds of the people of College Park. I believe my family is probably not alone in our diversity and I think that's what makes College Park beautiful. So my hope is that this might be something that y'all take into consideration at council meetings moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize if I mispronounced his name, but Carthail Garrison of Beachville, Leafy Road, discussed the boxing venue.
The boxing issue is on the agenda. So if you're here with the application for it, then we'll handle it at that time.
Next, I have Betsy Eastman of Rugby Avenue to discuss travel and contact and emergency.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Betsy Eastman on Rugby Avenue here in College Park, Georgia. I'm here to just ask a question about how much work do we really want to get done at the city council meetings each week? If there are corrections to the minutes, why are those not submitted prior to the meeting so that they can be reviewed and the minutes updated so that then you all can vote on the minutes? It seems like that'd be a more expedient way. But also, if you all had reviewed what was going to be discussed tonight with the Granicus Company, I sat here and listened, heard an excellent presentation, which several of you commented on. And in that presentation, they stated that they could offer the service where the meeting would be recorded word for word. And so therefore, it would be documented correctly. Yet, Councilman Karn disagreed with going ahead with that section of the Granicus package. And Councilman McKenzie, if you had read the Granicus package, wouldn't you have had more questions about it? Because you didn't have any questions of Granicus about recording the minutes and stating that, gosh, that might solve the concern you would have when it'd be later recorded. So I'm just concerned because I come to these meetings and I hear you people, the council members say, I didn't receive a packet. I didn't get this. I didn't know that. Well, that's part of your job is to be ready for this meeting or for the city manager to get that information to you or the city clerk. But somehow, these meetings need to progress and we need discipline. And that's what I feel like the mayor is trying to do by giving each one of you a chance to talk. And yet, we wasted 40 minutes tonight because she was trying to make sure everybody could talk, but yet you wanted to argue over whether anybody could talk or not. And this is getting to be ridiculous. And to Mrs. Hill's comment, the reason that the city of College Park is going to be a laughing stock is because we can't get work done at this meeting. We do not need to approve travel expenses for city council family members. You should be ashamed of yourselves for even bringing that up. City business, it needs travel for city business. It should be work-related, not a family vacation. And if we have an emergency, we need somebody to be decisive. And that's the mayor. And she can actually call an emergency meeting if we have an emergency meeting, if we have a need for an emergency meeting. And that's what we need to approve tonight, is to allow her or not approve your motion, but allow her to continue as she... As the mayor has for the last 60 years, to be able to call an emergency meeting as needed. Thank you.
Next, I have Andrew Gosh of Rugby Avenue. Sorry if I said it wrong. To discuss council comments, 7W and travel.
Hi, my name is Andy Gosh, Andrew Gosh. 2348 Rugby Avenue, College Park. Couple of things. One of them was the item W, which was struck off by Ward One Councilwoman, which I appreciate. And I would really like to... Some kind of assurances that that will not come again. I really am a little worried about that, that we had to be here in the first place for something like that. The other was item X, tripping the mayor of more of her authority. I mean, the only question is, haven't you all done enough of that? And how much more do you want to take? So I would urge you to vote that down, X down, and leave her with the authority she has there. Another item is the travel policy, which I just heard about from Ms. Eastman. And I just don't think the citizens of College Park need to pay for anybody's perks out of their tax dollars. I just don't think that's fair. I think everybody has their own expenses that they can handle. The councilman have a business, has one thing, but no other friends or family members. And so just addressing my councilwoman, you were elected with the... One of your goals was to straighten out the city, change College Park, improve College Park. And I got to tell all of you councilmen, what I saw tonight was appalling. I've been to council meetings where I've never seen anything like that before in the workshop session. The bickering, I mean, the whole teacher reference. I mean, you guys need some serious timeout. But I really hope the new council members can see this for what it is. It's... This is something that's going to drag College Park down. I'm embarrassed to be in this city when I see this kind of activity. I'm embarrassed to see the power grabs that are going on and just what seems to be bad policy. I'm afraid for College Park. And I really hope you all can start looking more in a positive direction to create a better city instead of just the chaos that's come up now. So thank you.
Next, I have... Next, I have Pam Legrier of 2034 Cannon Court, I believe. Top of discussion undisclosed.
Good evening, Councilor and Mayor.
Good evening.
Yeah, I'm talking about emergency. We have emergency over here in College Park Housing. We don't have anybody there standing up for us because first, they already took our houses on Six West. So are we going to get any help over here on the other side now? Are y'all going to take those? Or we going to stay up under the rock or what? We need help too, just like the rest of them. That's emergency.
Those are all the signed in comments. I have the email comments, starting with Grace McPhillips. Good evening, congratulations on inauguration of the Black History Month kickoff. I'm Grace Lansfield, a resident of College Park at Washington Rugby. I assume you already heard several comments about the contact information being shared in fields of privacy. As the city already has our phone numbers and emails for the code red, I suggest that the system be used after each new year to allow residents to opt in to specific ward communications. Some residents might want to opt into all newsletters. These opt-ins are required by many companies for mass communications protocol anyway. I believe that this is the best way to work smarter and not harder and protect our privacy. Thank you. Next, I have a comment from Tom Coleman. Dear Mayor and Council, we are opposed to Agenda Item 7W, elected official access to constituents' information. Identity theft is a well-established threat in today's world. Note that the wording of the Agenda Item does not restrict the level of personal information granted, but uses the open language of that includes. We do not give you permission to disseminate any of our personal information. Should we wish to give certain information to elected officials, we will do so ourselves. Tom Collins, Elaine Murphy, 1993 Cambridge Avenue. Next, I have a comment from Pastor Mark E. Applewhite. Good afternoon. My name is Pastor Mark E. Applewhite and I am resident of the City View for going on three years. And it's heartbreaking as to what is going on behind the scenes in that management office. I will be attending the public city council meeting because I honestly do not believe that the city mayor and representatives are aware of the treatment that the residents are receiving and why many are not paying rent and we are left with evictions and broken hearts and regrets that we trusted the residential company with covering our lives and loved ones as well. I just wanted to make my voice known here as well and look forward to seeing you Monday evening. Just for the record, I have attached my pastor in this email as well, a witness to... Witness I sent this email. May God keep you and cover you and I will see you Monday evening in God's grace. Pastor Mark East White, resident of College View Park, Miss Townhouse, College Park, Georgia. Next, I have a comment from Karen Corbin. My name is Karen Corbin. I live at 1866 Cambridge Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have been attending and watching council meetings for many years. I am concerned about the lack of details on the specific agenda items on the agendas. Why are the details not being provided in the council packets? For example, Item 7B doesn't have any detail. Are you trying to reduce expenses here to raise costs? We as citizens have the right to know what your intentions are prior to the city council meeting. I also want to say that I am strongly against Item 7W. I do not authorize the city to share my personal information that I was required to give as a customer of the city with anyone other than what it was originally attended. Thanks, Karen Corbin. Next, I have an email comment from Demetrius Taylor and party advisement of the city attorney. Parts of this will not be read. Greenies Mayor and Council. I am Demetrius Taylor, 16-year citizen of Ward Two in the Barcadero Club Apartments. First, I want to commend the Recreation and Cultural Arts Department along with the Black History Program Committee for an essential, exceptional program we had at the arena. I spoke with Michelle Johnson and Tangi Warrior about making sure we keep the program at the arena as it gives us such an ever-present feel and gives us event and set of program vibes. Great job, everyone. The rest of the comment has to be redacted. Next, I have an email comment from Wendy Tenerine. Good evening. Thank you in advance for your time. I would like my concerns to be read into the record. Item V, discussion on the travel policy. I'm interested in knowing if a council member wants to use College Park funds to pay for their family to travel with them. That's unacceptable. With consideration of an action on a request to allow elected officials access to their ward constituents' contact information that includes name, address, phone number and email, I do not support this message. I have a deep concern that this runs afoul of the Georgia Open Records Act, OCGA, Section 50-18-72A20A, public disclosure of records that share individuals' personal emails or self... emails or cell phone numbers is not required under the act. I understand that the city attorney has drafted a form that elected officials are to sign if they want this data, but once it is released to a member of governing body, it is out of the city's control. It is subject to less rigorous security protection than if it stays within the city server. Additionally, if you need to disseminate information to constituents, you can always request that the communication department push it out. When people share their email addresses and phone numbers with the city, they are not informed this would be used for the information. At the very least, you should give people the opportunity to opt in or out before information is used in this matter. X, consideration of an action on a request to draft legislations to amend the city charter to allow special call meetings to be required by the consensus of three city council members. This has been in place for over 60 years. The office needs to have the ability to call special meetings, for example, like she did during COVID. I didn't feel comfortable taking the power away from the mayor, and I didn't think that that would benefit College Park in any way. Thank you, Wendy Teneri." As of now, that is all the email comments. We currently have 10 and 1/2 minutes left if anybody would like to speak that did not sign in or email.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Marjorie Dent. I live at 4021 Jesse A. Dent Jr. Road. And I'm here in a sort of rebuttal of what was said about praying in College Park. I've been praying in this city for over 25 years. I've been traveling from Newton Estates, which has been just woods now, back to where I am, to this and all, to pray. We have chaplains who are educated how to pray. Myself, I have a degree in nursing, a master's of divinity in pastoral care and psychology of religion, and recently, doctor of ministry and chaplaincy of law enforcement. And one thing we were taught was to pray with inclusion and keep in mind diverse religion. I've been to Israel to minister, so I've been with the Jews. I've been to Korea to minister, so I've been with the Koreans. I am from Kingston, Jamaica. I grew up in the Catholic Church. And what I'm trying to say is, we do the best we can to please everybody. But I'm not going to give up my religion for nobody. Amen?
Amen.
I'm walking in line with the chaplaincy department in College Park. We struggle. We just don't come up here and pray. We pray over what we're going to say. We write it out so we don't make a mistake, and then we offer it up to God. So what I'm saying is, we apologize if our prayers do not suit you. We have Dr. Walker. He's a psychotherapist, Rose Stewart, with a bachelor's degree. We try to get the best. We have two chaplains who are over 80 years. I'm 84, and Dr. Walker is 87 this year. We're doing the best we can. What I'm asking you all to do, find you some people, ministers in your community that would be willing to come up here and pray, because we have a few chaplains, and we just can't do it all. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Rex Willis, 1927, John Calvin. I want to talk about Black History, but I ain't got a drug in to say something else first. First of all, I hear people say 60 years ago, I've been here 45 years in this city, homeowner, entrepreneur, and giving back to the city. When you talk about family traveling, evidently, you didn't do your homework. When council used to travel, their wives used to go with them who was married, they paid one for them. They don't pay for both for them. Now, unless something changed, I don't think they're doing it now. I think it's $75, $80. They don't get a different room. They used to do the same thing 45 years ago when I used to come to this chamber. I won't like it. So when you get up here, know your facts. Sure, they pay for the flight. They should. These councilmen and councilwomen give a heck of a lot to this city. How much do it takes for people to continue saying, "Change, come about"? Like I said, I wasn't planning on talking about this. Under other administration, Terrence Moore was the city manager. If y'all forgotten, he got let, he had to leave. I'm not going to go through why, but he did. He was forced out. I didn't see one person that's sitting in this audience, email, complain about it. I support every member of the council up there, but I didn't like them letting Terrence Moore go. I didn't come up here raising cane about it. I said to them individually, to Ambrose and Kent, Derek. I just, I didn't think that was a good decision, but that's a decision they made. And I don't know how many times they have to continue saying something Councilwoman Tracy Arnold said, "Change, something different, deliver." How in the world can they deliver? Like I said, I'm not going to come up, no, I'm using Sabrina Minnison. We keep it on. Okay? So how can we move forward in this city? I want our council, our mayor, to work together. We got to work as one. Mayor got up at the Black History Talk very well, and I agree with what she said. She was honored, as well as Jamel, Tracy, had the option to say everything she said. It looked good to me. They was united. But when they come back and want to make administrative decisions, that's their right. I hope everybody agrees. They do have a right. And I'm going to say one more thing about this. When Tracy Ward came on 20 years ago, Tracy was the first African-American male, black male in War III. Tracy started with Chuck Phillips and started hiring black department heads. Chuck had tried for many years, could not get a black department head until Akita came on. Akita. We're not trying to get, I'm sure they're not trying to get rid of anyone who's not well-deserving working as department heads, employees. We need everyone here that wants to be here. I care about this city. I hear people talking about taxes. Sabrina and I are one of the highest-paid individual taxpayers in this city. So when you're talking about paying, well, you probably directing it to Councilman Kern. I'm paying this for his wife. That's what you're referring to. So when you say, "Oh, Rex Willis, I'm right coming up in the heck if I don't," 90% of you back there, I pay more tax than you do in this city, residential. So I think it's very, very important we stop all the hating, going against this council. As I asked before, give them opportunity, please. Give them an opportunity. They have a right to disagree with respect. So I ask the volume, please give them an opportunity.
Thank you.
So, excuse me, I'm going to need a couple more minutes, and I'm done.
We need a motion if that's going to be the case.
Well, I'm done with that, but I'm going to talk about Black History.
Hold on one moment. If there's a motion, then...
Motion.
And what is the motion?
Second.
Hold on. What is the motion, sir?
To hear the residents out.
A second. Motion to hear the residents out, and that is seconded by Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion? Attorney General, Madam Clerk?
Counsel, just to let you know, there's less than 45 seconds remaining. Is that to hear the rest of the people out or just Rex Willis?
Can we, can we make it to the rest of the people?
Can we, can you make that?
I want to hear from anyone else who wants to speak.
So I'm done with that.
Hold on, hold on. There hasn't been a vote yet.
Excuse me.
Sorry. All right. So there was no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Please proceed.
Now, I want to talk about the Black History. Tangi, Ms. Phillips, thank you so much for what you did for Black History. And Ms. Phillips, you have been fighting, and I thank God that you had the opportunity to come and see this council, the Black History event that we had this weekend. I'm so honored to see you there with health and strength. Tangi, great job. The whole committee, great job. Jamel, so proud to see you up there, being honored. Tracy, so honored. Mayor, congratulations. All of you all deserve, you got voted in. So all of you all deserve what the honor accolades that you all received. So I'm so honored for my son to be there and to be honored as my granddaughter. So it was a great event. I pray that we continue building on what happened this past weekend. So thank you, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
My name is Jesse Phillips. I live at 4124 Williamsburg Drive. I'm here because I love you. You're my people, and you're my council, and I'm going to support you. But let me just give you an example. If I hired any one of you to work for me, I would expect you to try to please me. These people out here that are coming up here talking, I hope you're listening to them. You can't do everything everybody say, but listen to these people. These are the people you work for. We're not going to get very far if you don't listen to them. And so, don't get angry. Don't get resentful. Think about what they're saying. If it's going to make our city better, then let's think about doing it. They, all the stuff she read off here is people complaining. Listen to them. They're not complaining just to be complaining. They're unhappy. So since you work for us, try to please us. I'm not fussing. And I'm not one of those people that's going to come down here every week and complain about the people who complain. I'm going to say this one time, and I'm done with it, because you either get it or you don't get it. Okay? I love you. I support you, and I'm here for anything I can help you with. Thank you.
Good evening.
And greetings of peace and understanding and love and truth. I'd like to greet you all in the chambers here tonight. Happy Black History Month. This is a month that we, African-Americans, the only people inside the Helsel North America who's brought here against their own will. Everyone else, they came free of course. And as I, let me back up. My name is Larry Brady Evans. I reside at 2112 West Princeton Avenue, and I've lived here in College Park all my life. And I don't see not one, not one city official, employee, or anyone here whose rear to hear in College Park. That says a lot to me, whether it's good, bad, or ugly. But I like to say this. What I see here, I've never seen before. I see all black staff here, and it looks good. But that don't mean that it's right. That don't mean that it's wrong. But as we could see tonight, there are some European-Americans who's not pleased with what they hear or what they see here. And they have that right. And I would never rob them of that right. But the way that you all carry on with each other, surely, I'm proud to see African-American women. It's your time. You've been treated pretty much worse than all the women of all. You've been treated bad. You had to carry the load. And us men, African-American men, we haven't been right, nor have the European-American men. He haven't been right the way he treated his woman. And now, it seems to me, the women are saying, "It's our time now. We're going to do to y'all what you did to us." But I got a rude awakening for you. If you think wrong against wrong going to be right, you're going to be back where you started at in a fight. So tonight, Councilman Kern, I remember when you first came here. I've never seen you talk to the mayor or other councilmen in the past the way that you talk to our mayor we have here. I don't know what the differences is, and I'm really not concerned with it. I'm concerned about the affairs of College Park. Roger Gay, I applaud you, because you have been attacked by the past administrations, that you had to stand up as an African-American against all oppositions that came before you. And you didn't tremble, and you didn't shake in the wind, and you didn't laugh when there wasn't nothing funny, and you didn't scratch where you didn't itch. And that means a lot, because in this day and time, there are those who sit in positions, and they trembling because the size of their piggy bank could be took from them, and they won't tell the truth. But let me tell you something. Your little piggy bank, you can't take it with you when you leave here. You ain't taking nothing but what you brought in, unless you're... You ain't taking nothing but what you brought in, unless your body. And your soul go back to where it came from. So I hope and pray that you all learn that this is a time for you all, us as African-Americans who have been treated the worst of all nationalities in this country of America, and to see you all carry on against each other, like that gonna be a big difference. You need to learn to love each other. We all we got. It ain't your piggy bank, or what you think you got your master's degree, who makes you superior to others. And I'm not offended. I'm just telling you the true facts as I see it as just a little nobody, a descendant of slaves. That's all I am, who have suffered at the conditions of America. And I'd like to leave you all as I came before you, and greetings of peace and love and happy Black History Month. God bless us all.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Moving on to other business. 7A, consideration of an action on a request for a council agenda and chamber, city council chamber upgrades by Greenwich in amount of $58,289.28. This is not a budgeted item.
Is there a motion?
Motion with discussion.
Motion to approve?
With discussion.
And is there a second to approve?
A second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Start, Councilman Kern, since you made the motion.
Okay, so Michael, if we're gonna approve this, we're adjusting that number to the modified numbers, what's it, 22,480 or so with the 2,000 additional? It was 20,400 some odd dollars plus the $2,000 additional piece there, is that right?
Right, so there's a accumulation of initial fees, the setup, and then there was the annual fee. And so we decided that we're gonna move forward with the community engagement, the voting, and the agenda piece, is that correct?
And that was the $22,000 amount, just so that we're clear, that's our amount, not the $59,000, 58,289.
Right, the remainder was the technical piece that included the camera and the setup.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we're clear with everything in the workshop. We're redacting it down to that amount, that's our limit, and year-to-year contract. We got, well, the three-year contract with the options, according to what your folks presented.
Okay.
If that's what I heard correctly. So we're gonna negotiate that contract accordingly, so, all right.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Item 7B, consideration of an action on a request from the USA Boxing Station Event site for the youth on January 1st, 2024, at the College Park Tracy Wyatt Recreation Center from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This is located in Ward 3. Council, you would provide a memorandum for this per the recreation department. If this item is approved, the facility can be free, but they will have to pay for staff hours, and also, if it is approved, this will also affect any other program at that location during that timeframe.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to table this item, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, is there a second?
Second with discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Arnold, do you wish to speak?
I'm tabling the item until we get further information about this particular event to ask more questions, and then also give the gentleman the opportunity to actually present the information in the workshop session to give us more information.
Councilmember Kern?
I agree along the same lines. It'd be good to put it on the workshop so we can take a look at the entire thing. Sounds like a positive event that you all want to put on. We like positive events in our community. So I'm, for one, I'm not against it, but we need some more information so we get a full understanding of what we're talking about here. Obviously, this kind of a recreation event is new for us, so give us enough time to come back at the very, at the next meeting, the workshop, so we can get acclimated in terms of what it is. I think I know what you're trying to do, but we need the detail and get some questions answered so that everybody's, is okay with moving forward. So I think it's a positive project, and we need to flesh it out a little bit, and maybe we get to where we need to be, so.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Gay, you have the floor.
Are you gentlemen, the athletes, promoters, what is your role? Since you're here, you might as well just give us a quick snippet.
Yeah, so it's definitely an honor. I want to congratulate everybody, Mayor and Council team. I am Raheem Rolak. I'm the assistant coach of Different Breed Boxing. Along here with me is Pastor Lamar Price and Cartel Granison, who is a veteran, works for the VA. We all together formed Different Breed Boxing, where we coach and mentor young men in our boxing program.
Any further questions, Councilman Gay?
No, but I'm excited to learn more about what you're doing, so schedule would I see Magic on the workshop?
And we're super excited as well, and appreciate the chance to be able to share exactly what we do. Just want to thank you guys for the invite on Saturday. It was an awesome event, and the food was fresh and delicious, so definitely appreciate that. Again, another awesome event, happy Black History Month.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
None.
Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor of tabling this item?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that is unanimous.
Can you give him his call?
Thank you.
Take half his information.
I have it.
7C, consideration of an action on a request to approve the Tracy Wyatt Recreation Center proposed mural design.
Is there a motion?
I'm moving to table this item as well, but we can table it with discussion.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Arnold, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Kern. Councilmember Arnold, any discussion?
So we did begin working on this when I state "we," the Department of Economic Development, along with the Department of Recreation and Cultural Arts, beginning towards the end of 2021. We actually vetted out several artists from the South Side area, and we came to select the final artist, who was Petey Parker. I did want to provide, the first mural that you saw was after some initial input from Councilwoman Tracy Arnold, but I also wanted to provide some, or I can pass it out. We do feel that additional insight is needed, so I would like to have the item table, so I may work directly with Councilwoman Arnold, so that we may come up with a mural that she feels is fitting for her community. But I do appreciate her input, and hope that we can continue to come up with the best product for the community in the end.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will move forward to a vote.
I just have a question.
Councilmember Kern, go right ahead.
I mean, all of these look nice. These aren't residents, are they?
They are not. So the artist did spend two months visiting the Tracy Wyatt Recreation Center. Unfortunately, he did have a family emergency, so he wasn't able to attend this evening, but he did visit it in the morning, seeing the seniors with the line dancing, as well as their workout class, coming back in the evening and seeing the youth programming. So this was the ambition, it doesn't personify anyone specifically, but more of the energy that is felt in the building.
It's a profiler.
Yes, sir.
And that's what it looks like. Whatever Councilwoman Arnold wants, whether it is fine with me.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Next on Agenda 7D, discussion of Peachtree Government Relation Contract, the state lobbyist consult.
Is there a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion at this time that we not renew this contract.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor of not renewing the contract with Peachtree Government Relations?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Next on Agenda 7E, consideration of an action on a request for a contract agreement between the City of College Park and Icon Film Works for Video Production Services.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, a motion to approve the contract agreement between the City of College Park and Icon Film Works.
A second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, and Councilmember Arnold, seconding. Any discussion?
I've got some discussion.
Councilmember Kern, go right ahead.
All right, James, good to see you here.
Great to see you, Councilman.
Okay, looking at your breakdown here, I see a total of 50, 51,000 for the, for the basic setup. Is this around the same of what we had last year?
What you're looking at is actually the exact same contract from last year, just dates changed.
Okay, so there's no increase there?
No, we wanted to do like we've done in the past, be great community partners, and keep the numbers flat.
Okay, so the regular station programming productions, that 24 with the asterisk, that's gonna be the amount for additional above and beyond this set of 24?
The, are you looking at the numbers for the additional station programming? Say it one more time, sir?
Well, I see the asterisk.
Let me look at the page. Oh, yes, so the, what you're looking at is that, that's the, he's looking about the contract, the last contract, this is the, he's looking at the. Yeah, okay, so what you're looking at, when you look at the regular station programming and productions, those are the, that's actually when we go through and actually do the programming of the television station, so that's not, that's not, that's not that portion there. When you, what you're thinking about is the, the things like those Ward by Ward videos that we do with you, you remember the one I emailed you about last week? The Ward by Ward videos and all those other videos, those are covered under the event recap videos and mixed media productions. The regular station programming and productions, that's when, that's when we actually do the programming of the television station, those functions.
So those 24 are not, are not video, are not video?
No, that's actual work, where we're actually programming television station, because we wipe it clean and program it, program it brand new.
That clears that up, so we're, so we're talking about 72 basic programs out of the three sets of the 24, that's what we get, is that right?
That's, uh...
Council meeting, work session, and the recaps, we get 24 of each.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Okay. One of the things I had to concern about is, I looked at some of the, some of this you corrected somewhat. When we go on our CP23 YouTube channel, is it YouTube? It's YouTube, right?
Yeah, it's on YouTube, Facebook, YouTube and Facebook, yes, sir.
Well, sometimes I see the labels as College Park City Council Meeting, and then it may say June 5th, and then I'll see right next to it, June 5th, College Park City Council Meeting. But one of them is apparently mislabeled, because one of them is the June 5th Regular Session Council Meeting, but the other one is the June 5th Workshop Session.
Right, and we, after that email you sent a couple of months ago, we actually corrected that and have updated. We also, we've also made the thumbnails for it as well. So every time we, actually, the next day after we have these meetings, I actually go in and update that, as well as I update the agenda to reflect that it's incorporated as well, so.
Okay, I'm glad we cleared that up.
Yes, sir.
The only other issue, well, two other issues that I had, and these are small nits.
Okay.
I want you to know, I support, you know, going forward with this. I've heard a couple of meetings where we've had the sound, where we've only had a left...
Yeah, we, yeah, we've updated that as well. We purchased some new equipment over the, over the Christmas holidays, so that's not a, that's not an issue anymore. We've actually decommissioned that previous piece of equipment that was causing that issue.
Okay, so it wasn't just me that noticed that?
No, it was something that we, that we noticed, but we wanted to make sure that during the break that we were able to assess that issue and also resolve it. So we've already taken care of that. That issue's a non-factor anymore. We updated that over the Christmas holidays, sir.
All right, I certainly appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Third issue I had. Now, lately, when I've gone on some of the recordings, I will see commercials pop in in the beginnings, and I've seen commercials pop in in between the actual meetings. Now, you know, I understand that's a monetization of some of the YouTube or however it works, but, you know, you know, as a government entity, I, well, obviously, I just say I don't want to see commercials in, in between, or in the beginning, or the end of our, you know, sessions being recorded. Now, I don't know how they popped in. I guess there were enough views where some advertiser was interested, I guess, is that kind of how it evolves to there?
I'm not exactly certain, that's not something that's in my purview. That's something that YouTube does, so that's not something that's in my purview. If you look at it on Facebook, you don't have that issue at all, but that's not something that's in my purview, and that's not anything that we do on our side of our contract.
All right, well, Jamicia, here's what I'd like you to do. You know, YouTube has its rules and regulations. There's a threshold trigger where someone can run commercials, but there's also some automatic things that pop into YouTube. But I want you to do your homework, if you don't already know, you know, what the rules and regulations along the YouTube broadcast, which is apparently commercialized, and the Facebook, which isn't. Is that, is that what we're understanding?
Yes.
So in terms of YouTube, we need to find out if there's an option where we can have our broadcast commercial free, as we are a government entity. Now, I do not see the commercials on other government, city council, county commission broadcasts. So that probably tells me that there's an option where we can opt out of those commercials one way or another, but let's do some research and find out about that, because we don't want to, you know, we don't want to commercialize this thing. We're not, you know, trying to make money off our council meetings or whatever have you. Last thing I'll say, I think overall, the video and the quality and everything's, you know, done pretty well. You know, I don't mind paying somewhat, you know, meaning Icon to, you know, contractually handle these duties that are part of, you know, but, you know, of what you do. But what I do have trouble with is paying twice. Our Public Information Office, in my opinion, should be able to handle these videos and whatnot. Now, ever since we've had Public Information Office in office here, videos were handled by the Public Information Team. And we're going ahead with your contract, but city manager, I want at some point to look at that cost coming out of that particular budget, because I don't, and speaking for residents, I'm not gonna pay twice over for something when we're getting it done one time. So I want us to look at that at the next meeting. Other than that, I'm fine with the quality of work. If we can find out about the commercials, I think we're good.
Any further discussion?
I have a couple comments.
Councilmember Gay, floor is yours.
Oh, a couple comments. I concur that previously, the videography was done by the Communication Office with that staff. That was Gerald Walker as our director. So I don't know how we got to contracting it out. I want to say this publicly, I, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I'm not pleased with a lot of the things. During the election, I felt that you all was partial. I've, I've contacted you numerous of times to put thumbnails on YouTube videos. I contact you, and I supported you in the last contract.
Councilmember, I would, I would remind you of Robert's Rules 430, just to avoid injecting personal notes into the debate.
Thank you. So I was not pleased with how things went, so I'm not gonna vote again. Second thing is... Second thing is, um, we need to look at taking that out, the budget, because we shouldn't be paying for it twice. And a simple thumb tack is all I ask, that you put it on videos. You can do that, I mean, you can do that, that's easy to do. Communication should be doing, and I can give you a program called CAMPA. The second thing I'll tell you is that organizations spend millions of dollars on, on videography, we get, at best, a hundred fifty-seven views. I'm, I'm watching, I'm watching people put, do hair designs, get twenty, thirty thousand views. We're making these important decisions for these people in this community, we're getting a hundred fifty-six views, we need to be a little bit more creative in how we, you know, market these covers, we need to talk about, um, how we can get more views, we just need to be a little bit more innovative, so that's, that's my comment.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
So, yeah, so the, the number of views that, when I see...
Councilmember Carr, so, let me, so you, second time around, yes.
You said any further discussion, right?
Yes, so you wish to speak, the floor is yours, all right.
As, well, I was, I was speaking. In terms of the YouTube video, there, it has the number of views there in the bottom of it, is that the accurate amount, actually, what we, what, what, how many times it, it has been seen at that particular point in time, is that, is that ac, is that accurate?
Yes, that's the count that YouTube gives you guys at the bottom of it, I, that, yes, that's the answer, they, they, yes, that's the count that YouTube gives you at the bottom of the video, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, that answers my question.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just wanna say that I really appreciate your work and the, your professionalism, and uh, that's why I'm in favor of renewing your con, continuing with your company, uh, everything is, and it's, and, and I wanna thank you again for even all the work that you did. Jamisi and I were in the office together last week, and, you know, we were saying, we hope we get these videos done, and, and you worked some magic, so I just wanna compliment you, commend you, thank you, and, uh, looking forward to continuing to have you work with us.
Absolutely, thank you, Council, Councilmember, and we look forward to working with you guys in the future, and we're gonna work on making sure that we shore up these loose ends, I'm gonna be following up with each of you to get you guys scheduled for your upcoming videos that we wanna do, because we wanna get these done on a quarterly basis, and we wanna tell your stories, so I look forward to working with each of you, and uh, thank you guys for your support, I appreciate you.
Any further, any, any further...
I have some more discussion.
Okay, Councilmember Gay, go right ahead.
On the festival, so, we had an amazing festival, this is our eighth year, and, and it wasn't captured. Not for me, it wasn't, not like it should've been, I mean, there were no, I mean, I just, you down here for, so I'm just saying, you, you gotta, for me, I need to see more.
Well, Councilmember, I'll be happy to go back through, if you want it re-edited, I'm happy to look back through it, we had camera guys there the entire day for the festival, so I'll look back through it and see what we can do to, if we can make this right for you.
Thank you.
This is my first time hearing this, I thought I'd gotten remarks from you that the, that the video was done, done well, but if it's not done to your liking, just as we've done with every other, with everyone else, if you don't like the way something's done, and just like how, when we had the conversation about, um, it was the Hawthorne video, you remember the Hawthorne video? Hawthorne Station, you asked me to go back out, take out some videos.
Can we just have him not talk later in another day?
No, I'm just trying to make sure that you know, we'll take care of it, sir.
Wait, gentlemen, 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 gentlemen.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion on this matter, which is to renew Icon Film Works contract?
No.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven F on the agenda, consideration of an action on a request to repeal ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero four, approved on October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to codify departments under a new organizational restructuring.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember McKenzie made the motion, Councilmember Gay seconded, any discussion?
Um, the only, you know, I do like the, uh, I, I, we also received in our packet, you know, what the departments would look like again, so I'm sure there's still some, some things that are gonna need to be worked on, but I, I think this is the right thing to do.
Any, any additional discussion?
That's all I have.
Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously.
Seven G, consideration of an action on a request for proposal, RFP, for employee benefits insurance broker services.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr, is there a second?
What's your motion?
Motion for approval.
For G?
Seven G, putting out an RFP, and yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor? I'm sorry.
I, I had a question.
Okay, Councilmember Arnold, go right ahead.
Is this not extending a contract, is this renewing the contract, or are, are we supposed to be bidding this out?
Yeah, bidding out, the service, not a con, not a contract.
Any additional?
I have a question, yes, sir.
Councilmember Arnold, are you, are you, you're good, okay, Councilmember Carr?
So, with purchasing, how soon can we get this out on the street here?
It's already prepared, so it'll go out tomorrow, I work with, uh, Ms. Gilbert in HR, so we can get on the street and get it back in the time and the manner.
Okay, just usually, maybe like, like the same ballpark thirty-day window? All right, okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes.
Seven H, the first reading adoption of the ordinance, number two thousand twenty-four dash oh-three, swimmin', article six, seven, City Court of College Park, of the city's charters to effectively separate municipal court from the police department.
Is there a motion?
So...
Actually, this is just the first reading, isn't it?
The first reading. First read, yes.
Okay.
So no motion?
We have to do it in the second meeting, so it's only Jennifer, this meeting, and for the nineteenth, I believe.
So do we vote this time?
No, no, ma'am, no, no, no vote this evening, it's just the first read.
All right.
Seven I.
Any questions for, from the body for City Attorney? Hearing none.
Seven I, consideration of an action on a request on a contract to One Talent Inc. for administration, management, distribution, and reporting of the Jack P. Longino Mayor Scholarship Fund.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Hold on, hold on, I'm calling for it, is there a motion?
Motion, my motion is that we approve this with the provision that no elected officials, family, servants, agents, or friends are recipients of this money. I'm repeating for the record, motion to approve with the proviso that no elected officials, family, servant, agents, or friends are recipients of this money.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously.
Question, what was, who seconded?
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, sorry. Seven J, consideration of an action on a request to a set bid for the Brady Recreation Roof Rehabilitations submitted by Caliber Construction Roof Upgrades, an amount of three hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred and one thousand seventy cents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Discussion?
Uh, Director?
Hold on, wait, hold on, it is, if, Councilmember McKenzie made the motion, so if she has discussion, she, she...
No, I don't have any dis, I mean, I don't have any discussion, and I believe this, this, I guess the only question, this is in the bud, this, this is budgeted, this...
There was a budget...
There was a budgeted amount.
There was budgeted amount, but it was to be a repair...
Right.
At the time when we did the budget, and there was one leak at the time, and there are five leaks.
Right, so it needs to be done, it's, it's like a nine-one-one.
Issue emergency, basically, repair.
Okay, that was, just clarification, thank you.
Councilmember Gay?
Yeah, we, we spent a considerable amount of money on Brady over the years, particularly with the community development block grant money, why, why wasn't this roof repaired done during those expenditures?
Well, the roof just began to leak, so it's a, it's...
So one leak required the whole roof to be repaired?
Well, it was one leak, and then there were five leaks, and so it's been sixty years since the roof has been repaired, it's, it's been patched, but not a repair, so we were looking at a repair when we were preparing budget in July, and we put money in there for that, thinking it would make it till we can get to the RFP, but it needs to be substantially repaired.
Is this out of the general fund?
It's actually out of car rental, yes, car rental, there was, there is budgeted amount, too, I think it was forty-six-five that actually is in the budget.
So we don't, just for the record, we are adding the difference of forty-six thousand from three hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cent for those who are counting the dollars up here? That was my comment.
Any additional discussion?
So, Michelle, you recommending the option two?
Correct, there are two options that were presented to us, one is not at code, the, the less expensive, um, code is asking for insulation and with, um, recommendations with Marcus Robinson and the city engineer that we definitely want to do the code, up to code option.
Well, you know, we hadn't budgeted for it, but it's, it's an emergency repair that has to be done, those things happen. Is this the same outfit that worked on the Wyatt roof, or the Convention Center roof at all, I know we had some repairs?
I believe Caliber did the roof here at, am I correct, Mr. Moody? They did here at the, um, City Hall.
All right.
And the representatives are here, if you had any questions.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion is unanimous.
Item seven K, consideration and action on a request for approval of a change order for S.H. Creel contracting for a ten-day brush imbalance as required for a new replaster curing for both the Conley and Wyatt main pools, an amount of twenty-four thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, is there a second?
Second, with discussion.
Okay, and, uh, Councilmember McKenzie, do you wish?
No, I mean, I, it just needs to be done, that's, that's all.
Councilmember Carr?
Absolutely, I agree, uh, now, I saw some folks out there last week, I think, were they doing this?
So, no, they're currently, you guys passed for the replastering project, and so they are removing the, the plaster that's there, and as the warm weather gets, you know, to a certain temperature, they'll put the new plaster on, and this brush imbalance, we thought we had accommodated that into the contingency, but due to cost, it's more expensive than we, what we expected, so the brush imbalance is what we're asking for, for that recommendation for both those pools.
All right, does it have to warm up for that, too?
Well, when they put the plaster on, the brush imbalance is done after that, right, immediately after, and it's like a twenty-eight day specific, um, regiment that they have to do for that, for the warranty, for the diamond right.
It's still temperature-based, the brush and balance part as well?
Well, with the replaster, and then the brush and balance is done for the plaster.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes, I hope I explained that, too.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Seven L, consideration of an action on a request to approve Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation's Sports Matters seventy-five for seventy-five grant award for seventy-five thousand for sporting equipment.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr, any discussion?
I just think this is a great opportunity, and I'm just glad that, that they wanna do, continue to give money to us to do things in College Park.
Absolutely.
So thank you, Dick's.
Any further discussion, and let me just make sure that I'm acknowledging, so, so if, if folks wanna talk, let me just make sure that we do it in order.
Oh, didn't you, would you do this for me?
No, I didn't, so, but, um, is there any, any additional discussion?
I see we're doing the...
Councilmember Carr, you would like to talk, all right, you have the floor.
I see we're, uh, doing the, the gymnasium.
Actually, so, the, the way this worked, we actually were nominated for this grant, um, by the representatives that actually assisted us, Dick's assisted at the ZUP mini pitch, so that relationship brought them into College Park, they saw what a great community we're, we are, and we had to be nominated for the grant, and then we do the application, so they asked what were some of the projects that we were looking at spending the seventy-five thousand dollars worth, so this was what was put down on the application, it's not necessarily what we have to look for spending it on, but they, it specifics on what the equipment, it can't be playground equipment, it has to be sports equipment for that, so these were just the things that I had put in for the application that we were looking at doing, so the school next door.
Understood, I, I noticed that in there, and obviously, we need them all, um, by the way, we, I had a talk with Fulton County Schools, uh, two of the board members at the, uh, event, um, they're gonna once again try to get our Fulton County attorneys, uh, to get this thing finished in terms of the usage agreement, we talked about it, part of this body going along with that long-term contract was to finish the use, user agreement, so, uh, we wanna try to double our efforts on that, and they promised to double their efforts on it, so I'm hoping we can reach out to them and, and get them to the table so you can get what you need in terms of access to that building, the gymnasium, and I understand a couple of small rooms, uh, adjacent to the gymnasium that, that aren't really part of the programming for the Promise Academy, so we definitely, uh, hoping to get the support with Fulton County, and at least the board members, they told me that they're gonna work towards making sure we get that agreement done, so let, let's stay on top of that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, it's moved to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous amongst those present, Councilmember Arnold has stepped out.
Item seven M, consideration of an action on a request for the Metro Atlanta City's Wellbeing Initiative Agreement, which supports for a forty-five hundred stipend to attend, to assist with the Food Desert Initiative for the City of College Park.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, any discussion? Councilmember Carr, sorry?
Uh, no, there's a, a presentation on this, we just, I'm glad to get...
No, I did, I put in the presentation that you requested for that, um, and this is just a stipend that was part of that eight-month, um, working with Atlanta Metro Cities for this health initiative.
All right, we'll take it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item seven N, consideration of an action on a request to purchase mobile pro systems for mobile surveillance trailer camera to be located citywide, an amount of forty, forty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
I would hand the gavel off to the Mayor Proton, we should speak on this issue.
Uh, I'm moving to approve.
I've, I've handled...
I'll second it.
I have a question.
I've, I've handed the gavel off to the Mayor Proton.
What's your question, um, Councilwoman?
I, I just need a clarification of the backup, so, on the agenda, it says that this, um, surveillance trailer camera is going to be located citywide, but then the backup says in war, war, and I just need some clarification.
Uh, on the item, uh, it was misspoken, it'll be used citywide.
Citywide.
Uh-huh, it's a mobile surveillance camera, and it'll be placed, uh, throughout all the wars and our high crime areas.
All right, that was the only question that I had.
Uh, Mayor?
Uh, Council, Councilmember Arnold had my same question as well, because the, the motion and the backup did not correspond.
Gavel back to the mayor.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Item seven O, consideration of an action to disperse payments to speedway forward for services rendered on building and grounds vehicle unit. to speedway forward for services rendered on building and grounds vehicle unit 128 F350 in an amount of $12,858.12 for engine replacement and repair cost.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Item P is consideration of an action on a request... Oops. I can't say that.
Item 7P, consideration of action on a request to approve the Voting Delegate Resolution for the Municipal Electric Authority of Georgia.
Is there a motion?
I move to nominate Councilwoman McKenzie and Hugh Richardson. I thought we did this already, but...
That was Electric Cities of Georgia.
Oh, okay, all right.
Is there a second? Councilmember Carr, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
7Q, consideration of an action on a request for a municipal competitive trust fund resolution.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Carr, second by Councilmember Gay to... To do what?
In this question, I do have a question. So, doesn't it make sense that whoever is the appointee serve as the... Authorizer, I mean, being that they would know everything about...
It's two separate items, really.
Right, okay. I'm just asking for clarification, though.
It's your decision. It's two people designated for the trust fund to sign off on that.
So, what is the motion?
Well, you want to designate these to match appointees for MEAG and Electric Cities, is that what?
I can't be one of them. On the trust fund, it has to be elected official.
We've got two elected officials, one for MEAG and one for Electric Cities.
What is, hold on, hold on, hold on. What, there needs to be a motion pending so we can have discussion on it. So, who are the...
Well, the two would be Councilmember Gay and Councilwoman Arnold... I mean, Councilwoman McKenzie, excuse me.
And so, there's a motion for Councilmember Gay and Councilmember McKenzie?
No, he, you need me? On which one, seven?
There's a motion, wait, there's a motion on the floor. Hold on, there's a motion for Councilmember Gay and Councilmember McKenzie to...
Second.
Hold on, to be the signees on the municipal competitive trust fund resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, any further discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, thank you.
7R, consideration of an action on a contracting Contemporary Services Corporation as one of our...
Can you speak up a little bit, Queenie? And slow it down just a tad bit for us?
Yes, sir. Consideration of an action on contracting Contemporary Services Corporation as one of our unarmed event security vendors at the arena in the Georgia International Convention Center.
Is there a motion?
I'm moving.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
I'm going to recommend a substitute motion. I did have a few issues with this.
Sir, what's your motion? You can't have discussion without a motion.
Well, my motion is to... I'd like to put this out again, just to take another look at it. And I do have some discussion, but that's what I think would probably be the best thing to do.
Your motion is to put this out for bid? Again?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Discussion? Councilmember Carr?
Well, one of the big things I saw was, I guess, the discrepancy in the bids. That's probably one of the widest differences I've seen in a while. And it looked like we had worked with them before, but they indicated that we hadn't worked with them before, so I wasn't sure about that. So, have we?
No, we have not. In the past, we use August Security for our 24-hour security and our event security. But what we found was because of a lack of staffing, sometimes we didn't have enough people. So, we thought it was better to separate them. So, August is going to do, we're bringing that back in the spring. August would do the 24-hour security, and CSC would do the security for the arena and the convention center.
Okay, so, they do jointly, arena and convention center, where August just handles the GICC?
No, August does 24-hour security in both buildings.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I'd like to take another whack at it and see what we get back. And those others can bid again on it, but it was just, it was really, it raised a red flag with me, so...
Okay.
Going to hand this over to the Mayor Proton.
Pardon me?
I'm going to hand the gavel over to the Mayor Proton. I wish to be heard.
Is there a question?
Well, if...
What's the question?
I handed the gavel over to you.
No, I'm done with you.
Councilmember Arnold? Councilmember Carr? Do you take the gavel?
I have a comment.
Councilmember Carr, will you take the gavel?
No, 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 thank you. I do have a comment.
Councilmember McKenzie, will you take the gavel?
No, I need to be able to speak on this.
All right, so, does anyone else besides Councilmember Carr wish to discuss on this matter?
I wasn't talking about the agenda, I am.
We're handling... We're handling the motion on the floor. So, is, does anyone else wish to speak on it? All right, hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor of sending it out to bid?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold abstained. Councilmembers McKenzie, Carr, and Gay vote in favor. So, this contract for unarmed event security vendors at the arena and the Georgia International Convention Center will be sent out for a rebid.
Item 7S, consideration of an action on a request on the renewal and amendment to the Johnson Controls Fire Protection Fire Protector Service Contract.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr, is there a second?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Any discussion?
I've got discussion.
Councilmember Carr, go ahead.
Chief, is this pretty standard here? No surprises or anything? All right, I've seen these before, but we've been using them for a long time, I guess. Because I keep seeing them, yeah, they've been... Do we... How often do we bid this out?
Johnson Controls on a cooperative contract that we're piggybacking off to get these services. They already do services for the cities, so this would just add them to Convention Center and Arena to continue with these services.
All right, okay.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Gay, go right ahead.
Just for the community, how much is this?
The total is $12,623, but we did budget $194,000, so it's way below the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Okay, I see...
Councilmember Carr, go right ahead.
Okay, I see GICC 32,873 in arena.
That's the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, my apologies. Okay, got it, I'm going to get ahead of myself.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Item 7T, consideration of an action on a request to approve Johnson Controls Fire Protection Services, our current fire service vendor to repair and replace a leaking valve and leaking clapper valve on the dry sprinkler system.
Is there a motion?
Motion with discussion.
There's always an opportunity for discussion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Councilman Carr, go right ahead.
Okay, we were just on item S, right?
We're on T now.
I understand that, but item S did have these numbers. Item T has the $12,623, not item S.
You are correct.
Okay, that's what I thought when you said 12,000. I thought you were referring to the one we were discussing. I just wanted to make sure. So, item T, this one is the 12,000, right?
This one is, no. Well, are you on, yes, she's on the sprinkler system. So, yes, this item is 12,000. And to correct myself, with Councilman Gay, it was the amount for the service contract was 32,873, but we still have it budgeted at 194.
Got it, okay, I thought I was reading it correctly. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't losing it up here. Okay, okay, got it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item passes unanimously.
7U, consideration of an action on a request to approve the replacement of 10 risers necessary to achieve the client setup requirements and to continue to provide quality service.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold, any discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 7B, discussion on the travel policy.
Is there a motion?
What would be the motion?
It's not a motion, it says discussion.
It's a discussion.
It's not written correctly.
All right, well, we need a motion to have a discussion, so...
Well, I have to make a motion that we discuss the travel policy.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Councilmember Arnold, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to start. I'm totally confused by our public comments that have come through about this particular agenda item, because there's nothing in the agenda packet that says anything about changing, letting council persons bring their spouses. So, I have no idea where that information came from or was disseminated. It's not in the agenda packet. So, wherever you got that information from, we don't know where that information came from. My concern with the travel policy was that last, in the last two weeks, we had an issue with our BIDA members traveling to training at UGA, and they were informed at first that the city would not take care of their travel, their lodging. And this was a meeting that was going to require travel. They would, it's an all-day event, and then they would have to come back. And at that time, we thought it was in Athens. So, when we looked at the travel policy, it simply said, and that's what this is about tonight. So, like I said, we just need to stop listening to things that we're hearing. When you look on page 458, which is 7VB of the travel policy, the travel policy for lodging, for, this is for any city officials or employees or anyone, is that it would be travel within the metropolitan area, which we were looking at the metropolitan, the five metropolitan counties. If you travel in the five metropolitan counties, you should not be provided with overnight lodging. But then we had this listing of all these other counties that, depending on where you go in this county, it could be quite an extensive ride, and especially for a meeting that begins at 8:00 in the morning and ends at close to 5:00 in the evening, to expect a staff member or a city official to travel, leave their house at 5:00 in the morning to get to a meeting that starts at 8, and then leave that meeting at 5:00 and have to travel back home. To me, that is putting that person in danger for their life. So, the discussion on the travel policy was about us clarifying what those five, what the metropolitan area counties where you would not receive lodging would be.
Any additional discussion?
Yes, I have a comment.
All right, Councilmember Gay?
You know, I'll save a lot of this for my... At the end. But, you know, I used to have my constituents come down here. I used to send out emails to them, and they are so loyal. I mean, I could get tons of them down here. And I stopped after about a few years in office, because I never forget, a gentleman said, "Well, that's why we elected you. You are our voice." And that's fine, hell, y'all come down here. But this is a perfect example of how communication gets out wrong. I think there's enough blame to go around from all of us. We got to stop sending out emails to our constituents and inciting them to come down here and make comments that are just simply factually incorrect. This travel policy had nothing to do... Now, if you want to talk about our family, I will say this to you. When I got elected, prior to that, we had a travel policy. And what, here's the distinction. When we go to conferences, there's always a section that says spouse and children registration. It was never about paying for your spouse to travel. You know your wife going to ride with you. She can't fly with you, we not paying for that. But if you're going to rent a car, all your children going to go. But the thing about it is... When I got, when we had the last administration, my colleagues didn't want us to pay the conference fee for our spouse and our children. Quite frankly, my wife didn't go to it whether I paid for it or not. So, it didn't matter to me, because she didn't go to the stuff anyway. They went shopping. So, that $125 to pay for your spouse, but that's what this is. So, respectfully, please, please try and call the city manager people, get clarity before you incite your community to think that these people are trying to be... They're not doing that. So, what are we voting on?
So, Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on. Councilmember Arnold, do you have comments?
No, I was answering the question that it was a discussion for us to get some clarification.
Okay, Councilmember Carr, did you have anything?
I had one thing. The only issue I had with the travel policy, I believe we took care of that at the last meeting. I did have a concern about mileage reimbursement, and I think we resolved that, whereas the mileage reimbursement outside of certain distance, we got that straightened out so that all employees are entitled to that. All right, that was all I had.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Yeah, so basically, all that I, the purpose of this discussion was to amend it to the five metropolitan counties, which would be Clayton County, Cobb County, DeKalb County, Fulton County, and Gwinnett County. When persons are traveling to those counties for city business, they would not be given lodging. However, if it was outside of those counties, depending on the nature of the meeting and how long it was going to be and the distance, then we could determine whether or not that person would receive lodging. So, that's all this travel policy amendment discussion was about. So, I don't know if we can, do we want to actually take a vote to...
So, you want to vote to redact that metro area to the...
Yes, yes, yeah, right. So, my motion would be to, at this point now, to amend the travel policy to the, well, it says, travel and training expenses for hotel and per diem it says, travel and training expenses for hotel and per diem will not be allowable for the five metropolitan Atlanta-area counties of Clayton, Cobb, DeKalb, Fulton, Gwinnett. Is that five? One, two? Yes.
I think you want it to be, will be allowable.
No, won't be.
No, 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 you will not, you will not, right. Travel and lodging expenses for hotel and per diem are not allowable for counties within the metro, the metro, those five metro counties.
Councilwoman, are you specific?
Hold on, hold on, wait, wait, hold on. Councilmember McKenzie, you made a motion here. So, the, the counties, so, we're looking at page 459 of 469 in the agenda packet, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, that would, so, you're, you're saying DeKalb?
Clayton, Cobb, DeKalb, Fulton, and Gwinnett. Those are the five, when you, those are considered to be the five metropolitan Atlanta counties. If you Google it, it will show you that those are the five.
Okay.
So, we have 28, we have approximately 28 counties listed that, that employees or city officials would not be able to have lodging provided for them under the current travel policy. On page 458, there's a list of approximately 28, 20-something counties. So, we, but the, but the, it says that they're metropolitan Atlanta area.
Okay, so, there's a motion, though. You've made a motion.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Go right ahead, Councilmember McKenzie. If you had anything additional.
Oh, no, that, so, it's just, it's just to say within those five counties.
I'm gonna hand it over to the Mayor Proton.
I had discussion.
Okay.
My question was, can you?
Hold on, let me, hold on, let me hand it over to Councilmember Arnold, because I'd like to discuss. I'll hand it over to Councilmember Carr.
No, thank you.
Councilmember McKenzie?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm also exercising my right as an elected official that is, I was elected to vote, and I was elected to deliberate, and so, I will not turn that right over in a meeting.
Thank you. Go right ahead, Councilmember Carr. I'm, sorry, Councilmember Gay.
Councilwoman, all I was asking you to do was, in your motion, you specifically talking about staff and appointees, correct? Not family members. You're talking about staff travel and our appointees, should they go on events? Could your motion specify that so they don't think our family trying to travel?
Well, I think the policy only applies to staff and appointees.
Okay, so, it's in the, it's in the language?
Right.
Okay, fair. Thank you for the clarification.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Item seven W was removed, so seven X, consideration of an action on a request to draft legislation to amend the city charter to allow special call meetings to be required by the consensus of three city council members.
I'd like to speak on this issue, so I'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Proton.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Arnold? Councilmember Carr?
Yeah, I've got discussion.
Councilmember McKenzie?
No, I have discussion on this.
I do as well. Is there a motion?
Motion with discussion.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Go right ahead, Council, seconded by Councilmember Gay. Councilmember Carr?
City Attorney, for the record, this, this amendment does not remove any authority from the mayor at all.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
No, sir, it does not. But I should point out, the agenda says to amend the charter. It would not be a charter amendment. This is an ordinary ordinance, Section 2-1, I'm sorry, Section 2-21 of the, of the code ordinances, calling special meetings. It was not a charter amended, it's a provision to an ordinary ordinance. And as I understand, the amendment, it would allow the council to call a special meeting. I think the purpose is a clarification. I'll just read what Section 2-21 says. Special meetings of the mayor and council may be called by the mayor whenever in such official's discretion the exigencies of the case require such meeting. Special meeting shall be called by the mayor whenever a majority of the members of the council requests the same. So, in both instances, the mayor calls the special meeting, when the mayor feels that is appropriate on the one hand, and also when three council members request that a special meeting be called. So, in both instances, it would be up to the mayor to call the meeting. Under the proposed amendment, the mayor retains the ability, in her discretion, to call a special meeting. However, the members of the city council would also have the power to call a meeting. Because the way it's written right now, it takes the action of the mayor even if three council members so want it. But under your proposed amendment, it would not take action of the mayor. Three council members may themselves directly call the meeting.
All right, okay.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I, I do, and again.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Yes, ma'am. And I want to make it clear again to the public, this is another example of misinformation, especially specifically in my ward, misinformation being given to my constituents regarding the city council agenda. There was no, this was never intended to take any powers away from the mayor. This was just really a point of clarification. I chaired BIDA for two years, two consecutive years, and this is how we have it, where the chair of the meeting, the chair of BIDA, is able to call a meeting on their own. However, three BIDA board members can also call a meeting without the chair. So, that, that's all this was saying. It was just empowering the council to simply be able to call a special meeting, but it was not infringing upon the mayor's rights at all. And I do believe, and I will say some more in my comments today about situations like this that I feel are designed to continue to divide our community.
Is this a?
Councilmember Carr?
It simply gives the council the same option. It takes no authority from the mayor at all.
Any further discussion?
I, I had a, I wanted to bring the public attention to the water outage last year. It's my belief that our mayor was traveling, and we needed to conduct business, and we needed an action amongst ourselves to, to call a special call meeting and make decisions. So, I concur with my colleagues. This is another example of sending out messages, inciting community on information that's not accurate.
Any additional comments? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City attorneys report?
City attorney's report?
No report.
City manager report?
Good evening, everybody. I would like to advise the community, whenever there's doubt or an issue is not on the city website, please feel free to call the city manager's office and I'll clarify, and I'll clarify. Because our intention is to inform the public, you know, I'm very transparent, and there's nothing evil. So, if you are sending a message or receiving text or whatever, if it's not on the city website, please feel free to call and I'll clarify.
Dr. Adairn, I have a question.
Sure.
Is there, have, have you instructed staff to cut their upcoming budget by 6%?
I asked for all department heads, when they prepare next year's budget, to reduce it by, yes, reduce it by 6%. Specify where the 6% coming from and what effect that 6% will have on their budget. So, when I sit down with council, you know, I can let governing body know what, you know, what's going on.
And what was the rationale for the 6%? What was the rationale for the 6%?
So, the, I mean, the finance director wants to present, you know, where we are as far as the budget. And I just, it's something that I proposed in the next coming budget when I sit down with the governing bodies.
What was the rationale?
I like to call a point of order.
Yes, sir.
The city manager's giving this report, this is not an opportunity to, that I'm familiar with, that we deliberate or ask them questions. Now, if we need to change that, we can do that, but this is not the time to put him on record during his discussion.
This isn't a matter before city council, I'm just inquiring during his report.
I just, a point of order, mayor. You are the one that want to hold us accountable, point of order. Carry on, sir.
No, no, that, that's it, you know, I mean, ultimately, the governing bodies want our to do the budget anyway.
I'm just trying to understand where the 6% came from.
It was, it was.
City manager.
City man, we have a point of order.
I think if any elected official has a question with you, they can take it up with you at any time, in the morning, whenever. So, I think we need to get on with your report.
Do you have anything else in your report, sir?
Huh?
Do you have anything else in your report?
Do I have anymore?
Any, anything else in your report?
No, that was it.
Okay. So, if you could answer me, why, where did the 6% come from?
Point of order, mayor. We have never questioned the city manager as he's giving his report or, or as she's giving their reports. I don't think that's proper. And again, any questions anyone has, feel free to ask the city manager as soon as we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, sir. As the presiding officer, this is the time for the city manager to make his report, and I have the right to inquire. Dr. Adairn, could you please answer where the rationale for the 6% came from?
Um, I, I said that, I have a summary of last year's budget.
Yes, sir.
And I have a preliminary summary of where we are right now, and that's where the 6% comes from. You know, that just, it is just to keep us focused, because you look at some of the projects right now, some line at it.
City attorney, we need clarification. Now, if we're gonna break the rules, we're gonna break the rules.
Let me be clear. The charter says that the mayor presides over deliberations. We passed an ordinance that said that the mayor may not herself deliberate as the council is presiding, excuse me, as council's deliberating. What we're doing right now, in terms of, reported to city attorney, reported to city manager, those aren't items that the council's deliberating. This is, this is just conversation. And so, any elected official can make inquiries and have conversations at this point in the meeting. The prohibition on the mayor deliberating relates to the actual agenda items where the council's gonna deliberate or take action, doesn't relate to this portion of the agenda, where you have the city attorney report, the report of the city manager, the report of mayor and council. All of that is, is, is something that the council members or any elected official can comment on.
Thank you, sir.
So, so in response to your statement?
Councilmember Gay, I'm, I'm still trying to understand, I, Dr. Adairn was still in the middle of the session.
You're gonna have a chance to talk. In response?
Wait, hold on, no, sir. Sir, I'm presiding over this meeting. I've asked Dr. Adairn a question. I'd like him to finish, and then I will recognize you.
But I don't need you to recognize, I'm, I'm talking back to the city manager, and then, as a point of clarification, all I was saying was that.
Councilmember Gay.
This is a presence that she is inciting. We don't do this. And besides that, you should not discuss matters that are not vetted and properly having our staff an opportunity, because you're putting information out that you have not had an opportunity to discuss with us. Now, we're trying to be respectful up here. It needs to go both ways.
Council, uh, Councilmember Gay, I would remind you of Roberts Rule 430 and maintaining a courteous tone. And thank you. And Dr. Adairn, I'm, I'm trying to understand where that instruction came from, and?
No, no, the instruction didn't come from anybody. That's something, as I said, you know, I'm very well versed in budget. I've been dealing with budget and I've, as a assistant city manager, I've gone over three budget cycles in other areas. And I have a summary of, a preliminary summary of where we are now, and that's, that's where the, I would ask us 10%, but I felt 6% depend on the department. That's fair across the board.
So, so, the instruction has gone out to department heads to cut their budgets by 6%?
Ma'am, I, I never told anybody I'm cutting their budget. Let's be clear. All I asked was, look at taking, deducting, or reducing your budget by 6%. State where the 6% coming from and what effect you have on your budget. That was what I instructed the department head. I never told any one of them I'm cutting their budget.
No, I understand.
And it's a big difference between cutting and asking somebody when you prepare your budget, adding 56% where it's coming from and what effect it will have on your budget. And I explained to all of them, when I sit with the governing bodies, I'll show them everything in black and white. And if you're gonna have to pass the budget anyway, it's not me. It's just to show the governing bodies, you know, where we are at the budget, and where I'm just.
So, at this point in the budget, what did you see that prompted that?
I have a 20, 25-page summary of, of the city budget, and you can see some, some areas that have gone above where they're supposed to be. This is just beginning of February. We started the budget 1st of July. Okay, we still have, have it July, it's October, June, the 3rd. So, that, that's where, you know, where it is.
Understood.
As far as anybody, nobody instructed me, okay? You are the governing bodies, I will present to you, you know, what's, you know, what's fair, and you're the one that has to approve it or follow it.
Understood. Any other questions for Dr. Adairn?
No, but I would like to say thank you, Dr. Adairn, for conducting the exercise so that we can be informed. I don't think it's supposed to be appropriate time for us to vet this or try to vet it, but I do appreciate you doing, asking for the exercise so that we can make a well-informed decision.
Fair. Any other comments or questions for Dr. Adairn? All right.
Report of mayor council, starting with Mayor Motley Brown.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for coming out to the inaugural on Saturday. It was a lovely event, and I want to thank our Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, Communications, Clerk's Office, our GICC arena staff, and everyone else within the city who did all of the hard work, our Communications Department, just getting the word out. It was a great event. Wanted to also let everyone know, we had a very good Cities United Conference through the Georgia Municipal Association. As the Federal Policy Council Chair and the Second Vice President of GMA, I hosted, I chaired that meeting, and the District Director of Congresswoman Macbeth's office was there and talked a little bit about some of the things that Congresswoman Macbeth is doing for the state, and also had an opportunity to connect with Congresswoman Williams on January 22nd, as she hosted all the 5th District Mayors. And they spoke of a particular program called Congress in the Community, and hopefully we will be seeing that within College Park soon. Basically, they bring folks from the district office to deal with some of the issues that are fairly typical on the federal level, challenges with the VA, social security, passport processing. So, have a great opportunity to have folks come to College Park and get some of the services that they need without having to go to the district office. I want to thank Ms. Harrison and Ms. Ames for their work to get us together to talk a little bit about our website overhaul. It was a fruitful conversation because, obviously, I think we all know the website is in need of overhaul, and looking forward to making sure that it takes the entire community into account and is more user-friendly as we move forward, because it's vitally important that we have information out there and we get it out there. So, looking forward to the fruits of those labors. I would love to thank our entire state delegation for coming and meeting with us on January 24th. It was a, it was a very good luncheon. We had some good conversations about some of the policy issues that are facing the city in- about some of the policy issues that are facing the city, including Senate Bill 16, which I know that our amazing Chief Elmore is leading the charge on, along with Representative Roger Bruce. Senator Sonia Halpern has also got this on her radar for certain. Senator Alvers is, from Roswell, is spearheading this effort to give our emergency first responders more flexibility in the ability to transport people. Because right now, typically, our folks are the first ones to show up, but they have to wait for Grady to transport unless it's a life-threatening emergency. So that ties up our resources while we wait on Grady, who has the coverage area in the South Fulton area to arrive. So it's, it's just not the best use of our resources. And I know that there are a lot of people under the Gold Dome who are working on this issue and very appreciative. I know the Georgia Municipal Association is watching this one very closely. Want to thank my colleagues in the South Fulton Municipal Association. They have chosen me as Chair of the South Fulton Municipal Association for 2024. And want to thank the great city of Haightville for hosting our first meeting of the year. It was a very positive one. Mike Carnathan from the Atlanta Regional Commission was there and discussed a number of workforce-related issues that are going on in our community and, and how to not only see, see the resources that we have, but also how we build upon some of the areas in which we have weaknesses in terms of workforce development. So it was a very, very good conversation. Also want to thank the Aretropolis Alliance for an amazing retreat. As the board member from College Park, we had a day-long discussion. There are about 30 folks on the board. And we, we really dove deep into the Aretropolis Blueprint 2.0 to talk about how we spur economic development in the entire region around the airport. And there were very, very good discussions about how we do that, what that looks like. Aretropolis and their partners have identified several catalytic sites in and around the airport community. And we, and we have one of those in our city because we know the convergence of a lot of very important things happens right here in College Park. And some of the challenges that we've had in activating the south side of the community have, are ones that Aretropolis recognizes. So they are excellent partners with us to, to try to get things moving in a way that's going to be beneficial to not only our current residents, but folks that we may attract in the future. Aretropolis also had a great broker reception last week. Thanks to Shannon James and his team for that and giving the opportunity to showcase all of the, all of the sites all across South Fulton and into Clayton County as well, that are available for brokers and developers and are basically shovel-ready. We know the south side is the right side. And we are looking forward to having the opportunity to build on our growth and work with partners who are focused on making sure that our community keeps on moving in the right direction. And also want to thank King and the Royal Couch. They gave me a lifetime achievement award last week. And that was really nice. And appreciate the recognition. And it was a lovely event at ATL. And I just want to shout out Jevon and the entire team at ATL because they do a great job. But that's all I have. Councilmember McKenzie?
Alrighty. Thank you. Well, this is my, well, we've been on council for one month and this is my third official meeting. And I want to begin my report this evening by wishing everyone a happy and a reflective Black History Month. Black history is made every day of our calendar year, but we take out a month each year to honor and celebrate the accomplishments, the achievements, and to document the past events and the legacy of our African-American diaspora. That being said, I want to thank Ms. Tangi Warrior and the entire Black History Committee and staff who organized and executed one of the most remarkable Black History programs I've ever witnessed in the city of College Park this past Saturday. Despite all the struggles they encountered in trying to ensure the right venue and produce a quality event, they were able to pull it off. Also, I want to say a special thank you to Mrs. Jessie Phillips, who was a legend herself for spearheading this program in 2018. When Mrs. Phillips started this program, she had to pull money out of her own pocket because she didn't get any support from the city. And to see this morph into this amazing program that we just had is, and for her to be able to experience that in her lifetime. This program was held in conjunction with our historic inauguration of the mayor, Councilwoman Arnold, and myself. Our keynote speaker was Lieutenant Rex Willis, who has made history himself as a young man. And it was inspiring to see him. And he serves as a witness to our younger generation that nothing is impossible and that goals and dreams are attainable through focus and just doing the work. My only disappointment was that the news media was not there. The same news media that harps on everything that happens, that is considered negative in our city, was not present to document this positive experience of our community coming together to celebrate the good. I want to thank everyone in our local community and metropolitan area who attended this celebration, including my family, who traveled from out of town to support me and to be a part of this history that has been made in College Park. Also, I want to thank all the elected officials, and I believe Tangi Warrior mentioned them in her public comments, who took time from their busy schedules to share this suspicious moment with us. I also want to take this moment to recognize the passing of Mr. John Ritt, who was an icon in College Park. He passed on January 8th. I just got the notice within the last two weeks. John served as the former chairman of BIDA. And even when I first became a member of BIDA, I sat with him at his house for about three hours and listened to him tell me story after story and tried to scare the bejesus out of me for being, for going and serving on that organization. But he equipped me, he gave me information, and I'm forever grateful. And I honor the memory of Mr. John Ritt, who's also a member of the Ward One community. As terms of our leadership for Ward One, as you know, I'm really, I'm a real big team player. And I don't see myself doing what I'm doing up here without the input of the community. And I have selected, and I'll say this over and over again, I am so elated about the selections of the board appointees that I have serving on city boards. And so Ms. Sakina Abernathy, she attended her first Keep College Park Beautiful meeting on January 18th. Tina Hill was at her first Planning Commission meeting on January 29th. And Karen Jeremy attended her first DMO meeting on February 1st. And we're very excited about that. In addition, we held our first Ward One Community Champions Strategic Planning Meeting on January 27th with dozens of Ward One members. And they came out in inclement weather to collaborate on ways that we can create a thriving community within our ward. We were able to form nine committees, or I call them teams. And each of these teams, and you can go on our website, onewardone.com, to learn more about the teams that have been formed. And we're looking forward to our Ward One members just going forth in the community, making the difference. Because it doesn't just take one of us, it takes each of us. On January 20th, I want to thank the College Park Citizens Appreciation, Association for appreciating myself, along with Mayor Motley Broome and Councilwoman Arnold. We, I was honored for being the first female and the first African-American to serve in this Ward One seat. And I'm greatly, it was a great honor. And I'm just thankful to the community for, you know, that type of support and recognition. I also continued, over the past 20 days, I have continued meeting with department heads, had a very good meeting today with Ms. Althea and Ed Wall. And I won't name everybody that we've met with, but it's been very, the meetings have been very conducive. It's helping to give me, as a new elected official, an understanding of what each of the departments are doing and what they do. And what I'm, try to make clear to the department heads when I meet with them, I know that when I'm sitting with them, I'm not the smartest person in the room. They are. They're the experts. And I'm here simply to support them and to make sure that the mission and the vision that they have for our city is accomplished. And so it was a very good meeting that we had today. Also, we did have some trees cut on Herschel and Fairway. And I want to thank the city staff for being responsive to that and getting on that. As soon as we had our last meeting on the 16th, our city staff began responding immediately to citizens' comments. I did hear some comments today, and people were concerned about why we don't respond in the meetings. But I will say this much, our city staff is on top of responding. And the answers to your comments can be found on our city website. So when you make, when you make a comment, there is going to be a response. It may take a week or so. But go back on the city site and there will be an answer. And so I want to thank the city staff for being attentive to that. We also put in some of the streets that we wanted to have repaved, that were given to us by members of the community. I went driving around, but also got the input. And so we have submitted that to Dr. Emanuel. We also addressed traffic concerns. On Virginia Avenue in College, we had heard from some of our residents, and actually, they were here earlier at the meeting. But there have been a lot of concerns about accidents, traffic, and crime. And so I reached out to our Chief of Police, who responded immediately. And I want to thank you, Chief Rogers, for your just being so efficient. And Chief was able to pull for us the different violations that had been cited in that area, crimes that had been committed. And so now we have some stats to look at to begin to address that issue. There was also a mention by residents of creating a roundabout. But we found out in these last few weeks that items such as that have to be approved through the Department of Transportation. So what the city is doing, we're combining all the statistics to state the case so that we can present that to GDY. I attended the legislative luncheon at the Capitol with our state delegation, which our mayor has mentioned already, on January 24th. And that was very enlightening. And we got to learn more about legislation, which I won't repeat, which he's already said. I also attended a community meeting that was held by Ward One Community Leader, Mr. James Walker, and the Real Change Foundation to address concerns on January 25th. Want to thank all the citizens that came out. Yes, there are problems. Yes, there are issues. But, you know, one of the ways that we can deal with these is come straight to the source. And I want to thank James for setting up that platform to allow elected officials to be able to speak to the community and answer questions. I attended the South Fulton Municipal Association meeting that same night. It was held at the Haightville Embassy Suites. And it was good to meet other elected officials that are out here in the trenches, serving within our South Fulton corridor. I toured the FAA campus with Councilman Arnold the next day, on January 26th. And that was with Mr. Wilkerson. That was a very informative tour. We learned a lot about what goes on there and that building, that facility, and the city's relationship with the FAA. So that was a very, very informative tour. I served as the guest speaker for the South Metro Democratic Women's Council. They had a retreat on the 27th. So I went straight from the Ward One Champions Meeting to that retreat and got to share with those women. And that was a great experience. In addition, I attended the Georgia Municipal Association United City Summit. Was there with the mayor at the Atlanta Hilton University, Hilton Hotel. And that was on the weekend of the 27th. And that was really good. I attended the, one of the new sessions for newly elected officials. I told the mayor that a lot of the terms were sounding just like Greek to me, but I'm willing to learn. It's like I'm learning a new language here. So I'm excited about learning even more. We also had our second session with the Price Barber Shop. And we want to thank all of our, our economic development persons. And want to thank our Ms. Gloria Abdullah and her executive team, and all the persons that are coming together to form this amazing project that we're going to do where 6 West is. So that was the second session. And there will be having another one, I believe, in the month of February, March. In addition to that, I attended the Tri-Cities Mixer, which was in East Point on February 1st. And we had lots of fun, didn't we, Michelle? Michelle's back there smiling. And we had several of our, my colleagues were there. It was a really good time. And then this past Saturday, after the inauguration, which was fantastic, we went on to attend the Atlanta Chambers Black Tie Reception for their New Heights. The theme was New Heights Educational Empowerment. It was a very, very wonderful meeting, wonderful get-together. I left before the dancing because there was no energy left in me to dance. I went on back and got some rest. So we did also participate in the meeting for the website overhaul. And I want to echo the sentiments that the mayor has already shared. Want to thank our media team for inviting elected officials to be a part of that decision-making process for us to give input. And I'm looking forward to the product that we are going to create with our website, making it more user-friendly, and also making it where it can have greater visibility than we have at this time. Finally, as I said the last, in my last meeting, I want to encourage our community, especially my Ward One constituents, to remain open-minded. I know that this is a change. Change, and actually, we normally have change. We can experience, expect to experience change every four years in city government. And our city governing body has been through a change. But not, change is not always bad, but change can be uncomfortable. And I want to encourage my constituents to get the facts. Don't rely on hearsay. We had two instances on this agenda today where my community was divided, it was riled up, people's blood pressure was heightened, all because they were misinformed about agenda items for tonight's meeting. This council is not here to hurt or to inflict anything upon this city that would cause our city not to prosper. I believe that I can speak on behalf of the governing body, that each of us serves, so that we can create not only the city that we deserve, that we all deserve, but also that we can create communities that thrive and prosper. And so give us the opportunity to do what we do, to represent you, but also to remain open-minded. Because we actually are greater than we think we are. And we're better than we're acting. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you. Couple of things. I have, I guess, quite a laundry list here. Queenie, great job sounding the agenda.
Thank you.
I know this is kind of a new thing, but it gets easier. Couple of things that are going on. We do have some new district lines in terms of our congressional districts that have changed slightly. City manager, I want us to try to get hold of a new set of maps with our congressional district lines. I believe there was some slight changes in some of the other possible, I don't think the commission maps changed at all, but our congressional district lines have changed slightly. So I think we can get those down from the state, at the state Capitol. This is the new congressional district lines. As you know, we're split between Congressional District 13 and District 5. So we want to make sure we get those. Let's see, a couple of other things. Congratulations, Mayor, on your lifetime achievement award. I did attend the Aretropolis Conference, and one of many conferences that I attended in the last couple of weeks. One of the active sites is in our city. It's along the Gabby Road Corridor, which includes the 150 undeveloped acres that is owned by the city of Atlanta. But that's a very, very important corridor there. Speaking of that corridor, MARTA has a meeting coming up, and Councilwoman Arnold, I think this is important for, you know, for your area here, concerning the LPAs, which is, which is, it's a modified version of the Bus Rapid Transit new routes that MARTA is going to be deploying. Now, one of the routes originally, as I understand. Now, one of the routes originally, as I understand, was going through the Gaby Road Corridor, but they're looking at an alternate route. What I'm recommending is, obviously, that's a route that we need to come through our community and not circumvent our community. I believe they have a new meeting coming up this week. We need to meet with our MARTA board member, and I had planned on trying to set up a meeting with the board member, city manager. I'd like you to attend. Councilmember Arnold, obviously, is in your district. We would also have a Fulton County official there as well to encourage and make sure that we can secure that route. I think it's a very important route, and we need to make our case for it. But this is coming up pretty immediate. Their board meeting is Thursday, which means we would have to get a meeting before Thursday. If we can get the meeting, we want to do our best to try to get that meeting and talk about that. Speaking of meetings, I believe at our second council meeting, we reestablished our multifamily task force. As you know, again, Councilmember Arnold and I represent 70% of the multifamily, 70% of our hotels and motels, as well as 70% of our convenience stores and such. So we get the brunt of all the issues that come with that. That task force, the sole purpose, in my opinion, is to raise the standards of quality for our residents currently living in unacceptable housing. We are moving forward with modifications to a lot of our ordinances, specifically the ordinances regarding our multifamily housing, our multifamily standards. Our first ordinance of this year was regarding the boarding up of doors and windows and other unacceptable things that go on for too long in apartment communities. Now, any apartment or house has a broken, you might have a broken glass, broken window, broken door, but they don't remain boarded up for months on end, sometimes years on end. We have to put the ordinances in place so we can end some of those things from happening. Hopefully, that's going to be codified at the next meeting, I understand, because we ran it once, is that right? And do we, well, we're in the process of that. So that's just a start to what I believe are many, many ordinances that we need to put in place to tighten up our standards so that we're at the level and standards of other cities, who, you know, if these type of apartment communities were in other cities, some of them would be condemned within 90 days. So we're raising the standards, and we're attempting to raise the bar, and we want to make sure that we want to do better with that. I was on a Zoom conference call with our city solicitor and code enforcement. We were addressing some of those concerns around citations. We were looking at the issues of enforcement and the accountability of the owners of these apartment complexes. We are working towards eliminating the unacceptable conditions in this city. The other week, we took, I took time out to drive several of our apartment communities with code enforcement. We went in several units. We saw numerous violations with every single corner we turned, just about. If we don't talk about these issues, we're going to never get to the point of getting them resolved. And we are going to get them resolved because we have the support on council now to get these resolved, and the support of the mayor as well. I think this is something that we're all unified on, improving the quality of this city. But we have to be determined to do it, and we have to insist on doing it. So it's going to take some work. Code enforcement in buildings, they're going to commit to doubling their efforts from staff. They're likely going to need possibly some additional staff. The increased efforts, you know, with the building offices and inspections, I think it's probably going to result in an increase in citations. And we talked around some of these issues. That may even require a separate calendar for multifamily citations. But if that, if it requires that, we're committed to doing that, I believe. We want to nip this problem in the bud, and believe me when I tell you, there are enough citations to go around to initiate a citations calendar. I've seen cities that do have that just for multifamily, that are heavy multifamily. And we are heavy multifamily to the tune of 75% rental. So we're going to work on this process. I believe this process, it will reduce our crime issues in and around our multifamily apartments. I believe it'll improve the quality of even our schools. It's going to improve the quality of life for our city as a whole. And I think everybody can be happy about that. So we are working, we're working towards solutions. Are we getting everything right completely 100%? No. No city does, no elected officials do. But we truly desire the best for this community, I think all of us. We're bringing relief to our community, providing free parks and recreation programming for the first time in this city's history to our families that, whose households are at $50,000 of income and less. This means a vast majority of our apartment children and folks are going to be able to participate in these programs. So we're working through that, and Michelle is doing a great job getting that together. And I know it's a Herculean task, but they're up for it, and we're all going to pitch in to make sure we get something that works for this entire community. Couple of the issues that I saw, city manager, first of all, I understand about the, you mentioned the cuts that you're asking folks to bring in. That is nothing unusual in College Park at all. As a matter of fact, I think it's pretty smart. Actually, we've had several city managers who, before budget time, have requested the same with department heads, that they come in 10% leaner, that they come in 5% leaner. So that's, that's nothing unusual, and that's just part of our commitment. It sounds like cost savings to me, tightening our belts is one way that we can serve the residents a whole lot better. If we can save some money on the administrative end, that may be more funds available for initiatives that we want to do out in the community. So we're going to work towards that. We hired the city manager to get that job done, and I think he has really hit the ground running. I think he was thrown into the deep end, but from what I can see, I can tell you all from firsthand experience, he is a good swimmer, and you have to be in College Park. So hats off to what you're doing and what you're working for and what you're working on. We want you to continue that work. The Black History Month ceremony in the Swearengen was probably one of the best events I've seen this city put on. I was very proud of how it came out. I was very proud of our city. It was great seeing us get to these levels of achievement. It was a great event. It was a great community event. I think there wasn't anyone in that event that did not enjoy that event and weren't proud of this city. Do we need to work more and work better at making our city proud? Yes, we absolutely do. We have got some work to do. I can't express my appreciation enough of Mrs. Phillips in particular. Phillips family, again, one of the first families of the city of College Park, and there are lots of first families of the city of College Park, the Willis family, the Bellamy family, so, so many families, the Cosses, all of them. But Mrs. Phillips, I guess from my time with Mr. Phillips, I learned so much from him as a member of this council, coming in as a young rookie. And, you know, in '05, when he would talk to me about things and I'd watch him do things, I said, "Well, what's, what's, what is this guy doing? Where is he going with this?" But the older you get, I find myself kind of realizing exactly where he was coming from. And I've taken a lot from other council members as well. So I definitely wanted to express my appreciation to Mrs. Phillips. The event was well, well done. Now, what I don't appreciate is some of the way that that committee was treated initially. That committee is comprised of residents, and I just don't believe that they should have to beg and plead for things that they, of course, are entitled to. When we have an event that our residents want to put on, we want to put on the best event that we can, and the best event that we're able to. And we did put on a first-class event, but it shouldn't have required the begging and pleading and pulling and tugging to get these things done. The reason why I say that is, that's the residents' project. It's the residents' tax money. They're paying the freight on all of it, all of this. And if it's something that the residents want to do, city, as elected officials, staff, we have to support what they want to do 1,000%. So I want to make sure that we do it just as well next year. I want to make sure the Juneteenth programming goes just as well, but with a little less of the pushback. So I'll just leave it at that. Last thing, last couple of things. You know, as with any deliberative body, none are perfect. You know, we've had major change through November to the beginning of this year. With major change comes major challenges and major transitions. But I, for one, am committed to a council and mayor retreat. Obviously, this is something that is greatly needed. I think everyone would agree on that. I, for one, am committed. I'm hoping and I'm assuming that everyone along this Diaz is committed. As a matter of fact, I'm not just going to assume that because it's too important, and I'm going to call for a motion to have that retreat at a date to be determined, but I want to make sure everybody up here is committed to a retreat as soon as possible as their schedules will permit, because obviously, I think it's very, very important. And we're going to commit to making a better effort of communicating better up here and figuring these things out. A retreat allows us that exercise to do that. So we're going to sequester ourselves, we're going to lock those doors, and we're not emerging until we come up with some cooperation, until we come up with some understanding, some processes and procedures that are acceptable to all of this governing body. So I'm hoping everyone up here is committed to that. I'm just going to assume that. Do I need to call for a motion for a retreat to make sure everyone's on board? Because I can't, I'm not speaking for anybody. But I certainly, for one, am committed to having a retreat as soon as possible, as soon as our schedules will permit. So I'd like to make a motion to that, to that effect.
There was consensus about that already in our conversation.
Well, I understand that, but here's the thing. This is very important, and if there is a consensus, if everyone is on board, if there's no objection, then we need to set that as soon as possible. So if there is a consensus, let's try to work on figuring out all of our schedules where we can make sure we accommodate everybody for that. Kenny, I see you still hanging in there.
Oh, he's waiting for me.
Mr. Anderson, he lives in one of our apartment communities that needs some serious, serious work. I've had code enforcement out there, we're looking at that complex as well. I lived in one of our apartment communities that needed some serious, serious work right next door to his for many, many years. These things have been needed for many years. There just wasn't a consensus on this body to commit to fixing these problems. I believe this year that there is a commitment that we are going to get these problems fixed and improve these standards in this multifamily community. Last thing I'll say, I have, and I've appointed Mr. Anderson to the Keep College Park Beautiful Committee, so he'll be handling that. In terms of the DMO, as of now, I'm going, I would like to appoint myself to that committee. I'm told legally that we have the right to do so. There are council members on the other cities that are part of that board, so I am going to, I guess I'll motion to appoint myself to that board. I'm very concerned with what's going on there, and we want to make sure things go as well as possible with the DMO, so I would make a motion as well to appoint myself to the DMO board.
There's been a motion to, by Councilmember Carr, to appoint Councilmember Carr to the DMO board. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Councilmember Gay, how do you vote?
You know, a no vote is a yes, correct? If I don't vote, you don't hear me, that's considered a yes.
Could you please state your...
Charles Phillips versus the City of College Park.
Sir, what is your vote?
Silent means yes. If you don't speak, it's an automatic yes.
An abstention is a, I think that's an abstention.
I have a call for the vote. All those members in favor, please, please sound audibly.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Councilmember Gay, what is your vote?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. So Councilmembers McKenzie, Carr, and Gay are in favor. Councilmember Arnold abstains, the motion passes.
And just for the record, city attorney, I believe that that's something within the guidelines that is allowed. Is that correct?
Yes.
And Mercedes, I know we talked about it as well, that is allowed, and there are other council members on the board. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're clear legally on that. That's all I had, and we are all going to commit to doing better. We've got to work through this and get this resolved quickly and in a way that works for this body to function properly, so.
Councilmember...
I apologize. I have one more issue. Apologies, apologies. It's been a long night, but bear with me. This is a short one. In terms of customer service, city manager, I understand we have a kind of a customer service individual, and then I understand maybe it's split between two individuals. I hear that part of that is Brecker, part of that is maybe Tasha, I'm not sure exactly, but in terms of customer service, and by the way, the customer, of course, are the residents. I've got residents of a certain age that I'm quickly approaching who have difficulty with a lot of things in terms of services that we could actually provide in some kind of way. And these are services that are, I guess, like applying for online benefits, tax difficulties, online confusion with modern-day regulations and requirements. I've got seniors that are trying to figure out how to collect that unemployment and are missing out on it, on their social security benefits, because they're not able to navigate through this, I guess, electronic cyber, you know, era that we're in. And this is a serious issue. I've had seniors that have missed healthcare enrollment because, and that's a life-threatening situation based on just not having the help that they need to get some of this stuff done. Healthcare enrollment assistance, public school requirements for the kids or grandkids and stuff like this. I'm listening to residents, and they need help with these kind of things that maybe other folks don't have any issue with. I hope somebody out there understands what it is I'm talking about. If you've got a parent or grandparent, or if you are a grandparent, that is a serious issue and a serious concern. I want us to figure out, designated, we got a lot of good, smart staff here, and I'd like somewhere where they could come in here and get some assistance with some of this stuff, because to us, it may be pretty cut and dry to our younger folks. But we got folks that are really confused with this stuff and really need some help with some of this stuff. So it's, it's serious. It's not just a nuisance issue. This is an issue, if you lose those SS benefits because you can't navigate through that website or get that email, or something bounces back, that's, that's real-life consequences. So I want us to really look at some kind of a service that we can provide where a resident can come in here and get some help on a public computer for that kind of stuff. So that's all I got, and I think that's a serious issue, because I'm out in my community, and I am listening, and we want to improve the quality of life for our communities just as much as we can. So that's it. I promise. All right.
Councilmember Arnold.
Okay, all right. So, I want to start with, I do want to make a recommendation when it comes to our council meeting agendas that I think will be beneficial to... council meeting agendas that I think will be beneficial to all of our citizens. And so I would like to see our agendas to include in the future more transparency in what the item is and what I mean by that, or adding more information. For example, is that, is that item budgeted or not? I think that'll be helpful for the citizens to understand what Ward is going to impact, or if it's something that is City Y. And the last thing that I think will be helpful and beneficial to all the citizens is who's sponsoring it, whether or not if it's a council member, a couple of council members, or what have you, or if it's being sponsored by one of our departments. So I think that will offer some more transparency in what we're doing as a body. And so that was just one thing that I observed and noticed over the past 30 days. And I think it will also give some clarification to citizens before they take the time to come out and they think one thing, but it's something else that's going on. And I want to start by saying that this has been a busy two weeks. We've had a marathon of events, and you've heard a lot about those events from Councilwoman McKenzie and from the mayor. But I do want to add my little flavor to the events that we've participated in the past couple of weeks. We've had the opportunity to sit down and share and build relationships through all of these events, and those included the luncheon that we had at the Capitol with our legislative delegation. There was a tour of the FAA facility that Councilwoman McKenzie mentioned earlier. I believe we all participated in the South Fulton Municipal Association meeting in Hayfield. I had a, hosted a brunch at Burger Milk Bisque with my Ward Three committee and board appointees, which was very insightful. Participated in the Air Troplis mixer, the Mega Power reception, the Tri-Cities mixer, and also the Black Tie that was mentioned earlier this weekend. I also participated in the CPCA appreciation breakfast that Councilwoman McKenzie mentioned earlier, and that was on January 20th, where Mayor Motley Broome, Councilwoman McKenzie, and I, we were all honored at that breakfast, and I want to thank CPCA for the recognition. I participated in the South Metro Democratic Women's Council Retreat that was held at the Atlanta Food Bank, where I encouraged women to consider running for office, and I was also sharing my personal story. And I thank SMDWC for allowing me to share my story. The 2024 Black History Program was awesome, and, you know, we were allowed to have our inauguration with that program, and Councilwoman McKenzie, Mayor Motley Broome, and I were honored there. It was an exceptional event. It showcased the intelligent and talented individuals that we, that we have that reside in College Park and that also work for our great city. I want to thank the entire planning and volunteer committee again for this memorable event, which it too, I believe, will be a part of College Park's history, because it was the first among all of the other firsts that we've made, combine inauguration and Black History Program. I want to thank College Park Power, Public Works, Code Enforcement for the initial work that had started on the Goddard Road corridor, beginning to make it safer for our citizens. I want to thank the city manager for providing transportation to the Capitol where I led the legislative luncheon. And then I want to give a special shout-out and thank you to the College Park Police Department, who were handling the incident that took place at the Tracy Wyatt Community Center, Recreation Center. And just as a, you know, gentle reminder to the adults and parents that are participating and supporting children in their recreational programs, adult behavior of breaking out in fights is not appropriate at any time. And just a side note that in College Park, we are not going to accept that type of behavior. And finally, I just wanted to, oh, I know, I have some other things I wanted to say. I wanted to also thank the city for recognizing me on my birthday and all of this. Thank you to the staff, to the citizens for giving me those birthday shout-outs, I really appreciate it. And finally, I wanted to remind all of the citizens of Ward Three that our website, our new Ward Three website, is up and running, and you can submit your questions or sign up for the newsletter at www.cpmwardthree.com. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay.
Well, thank you to all my colleagues, those great comments. I'll be real brief, I know everyone is getting tired. Oh, I'll go through this pretty quick. We got paraphernalia in a lot of our food marks and our gas stations. It used to be a culture in College Park that we didn't really have a tolerance for a lot of that. I know times are changing, but more importantly, the tobacco products I get, but the, the stuff that aids, illegal drugs, we need to keep an eye on our food marks, particularly the selling of weed, little packs. So just, we don't want to be that city that merchants start introducing our use, especially the food marks near school bus crossings and near school where the children, got to go in there and get stuff, then they got to see, they got to look past a whole wall of this just to get some refreshment. That's, don't want to be the kind of community. You don't see it in Brookhaven and Buckhead, they don't, they don't play that, so we not going to lie out either. The other thing is, the Promise Academy, we need to get, I guess, Brecker or someone to help us get with the principal and, I guess, our board members, to make sure that our students and our parents know that they can apply, because that were one of the discussions we had, that they would make an effort to try and make sure that our kids have an opportunity. And I don't think that's happening. So the Promise Academy and enrollment, it'll be just around the corner, right after this Like Councilman Karn's introduction, apartment multifamily ordinance, I had a great conversation with the new planning lady today. She still here, Ms. Ezra? She's probably gone. But what we talked about was trying to get the renovations of our homes to adopt noise windows, especially the communities where the noise levels are high, I think that's Ward Four, because we noticed Rockland Home, they had a requirement to insulate, and they did not do that as we speak. And I support them, but they did not do that, and that's not fair to the homeowners that has been paying that much money for these houses. So we need to enforce our ordinance, and we need to look at adopting the ordinance that makes renovation of houses where you're going to replace the windows with noise-radian doors, and Brecker and I has had a conversation on how she can meet with the mitigation folks over at the Center of Atlanta and Airport to get some of their best practices. I tried to get it in the last administration here, just went in one ear and went out the other. So I'd like for that to... The light camera, I think y'all thought it was going to be in Ward Four, and that's, that's not what that was. So we got a street where, where there's a lot of open-air prostitution. And so we thought about putting the camera there as a deterrent. We put the police car there, and they broke the window to call. Maybe with the camera, but the camera is also for large crowds when we have games. You can put it down here on Main Street. Now, speaking of Main Street, you know, three years ago, we, we did a deal where we tried to reimagine the Pure Gas Station. That's one of the few remaining Pure Gas Stations in the country. And, I mean, we, I used my discretionary funds and had a jazz stand and everything. We had Ward One architects do a rendering, and it went nowhere. And I, every time I drive by, that corridor coming down Main Street, it, that's what we need to be mad about, Ward One. That's something to be mad about. You got these $500,000 home, you coming down Main Street, it ain't happening for me. So I said all that to say this, we gave the developer our EPA grant to do Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessment in a condition for him developing, and nothing has happened. So we need to bring that to a workshop or something to just find out where we are with Just want to reiterate our streets, Skyline and Mount Vernon. And they're not two streets, y'all, again, one's just that they're short streets. You know, I don't want to keep mess going, but, you know, I want to say something a little bit academic right now. On my desk, my son, when he studying in Japan, Blake, he brought me back this little statue on my desk. It's this crazy-looking statue. He's, he's smiling crazy. He got declared, he said, "This is in China, is a crazy guy and a smart guy." He said, that's what he reminded me of. But where I'm going, where I said it is, you know, the 30th president of Harvard is a Haitian woman named Claudia Gay. She no relation to me. She's married to, she is a biracial marriage. And she's the 30th president of Harvard, and recently, she became under attack by a Jewish billionaire for anti-Semitic comments. And the guy had enough power, but he kept it up to get her to resign. And then there was these articles from the black community. They were actually scholar articles, and it reads, "Don't defend her because she's black." So I was curious, I read it. So essentially, Claudia Gay rose to the top by, this is how the story read, she made her career by exploiting African-American men, scholars, at least that's what they said. And they the one wrote the article, "Don't feel sorry for her because she's black." And these were, these were professors. And, and, and read it. Don't take my word for it, read it yourself. So I'm not trying to make any, she no longer the president of Harvard, she resigned. I guess what I'm trying to say is, when we had our last administration, this is a very important point that I'm making to the, the Ward One community, for the first time I read Speak Up College Park, I have never read that, that, you should read it, if not, if I never read it, it's called Speak Up College Park. I have not ever seen and read so much misguided comments, and I'm very disappointed. There was a man left, he said, "He disappointed." We, we, we both disappointed. But what I, what I took, one guy said, "We gonna make sure they get, make sure they go to jail and Korn and Gay still." I mean, I, I never even read it, but it's just pages and pages. And where I'm going with this is that, you know, prejudice is, comes from being ignorant. That's the definition of prejudice. Ignorance. Ignorance breeds prejudice. So to bring the point together about Claudia Gay, when, when, when we had our last administration, our city manager, I think someone spoke on it, he was fired in the first turn, I mean, literally. And the person fired him lived in this house. And on top of that, he was fired for cause. I beg y'all to get that man some money. Two, every African-American director, we lost. We lost Gerald Walker, 16 years, we lost Mike Mason, we lost Oscar Hudson. That could just keep going. These, these people were fired, and ain't nobody from Ward One came down here with their battle axes as, as the, as one of my consultants say, belly aching or whatever, belly aching. But none of them came down here. So back to Claudia Gay, let's just be academic about what we experiencing here. And another thing, my colleagues are very educated, very polished. They bring, from the mayor to the ladies here, to me and Joe. I think the community need to be proud with what they got up here. They need to be proud, and they also need to be inclusive. Instead of coming down here, being angry, come down here and help us figure out how we can work together. The pie is big enough for everybody, so enough said about that, and enough said about Claudia Gay, but it's, it's good reading. We have an Award for Town Hall, March the 21st, I have two elected officials coming, I'm not going to tell you who they are, because they haven't confirmed, but you're going to be real excited when they come. And only thing, Doc, is that I want to know when we can get those balusters on Highway 29, the little white things that I put there eight years ago, keeping people from getting hit by the cars. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And so at this time, I'll take a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussion of personnel.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Any discussion? Hearing none will move on to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. And so we are going into executive session at 10:55 PM.